All right, we're ready to roll. Thank you very much. Today is July 13th, 2021. Today is our regular meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We're going ahead and start with a moment of silence. Was there any moment of silence? Go ahead, Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I would like to dedicate a moment of silence to Gene Polino, a beloved elder of Winter Springs and Upper Lake. He was a World War II veteran, renowned writer. He was in the Navy. He wrote a lot of books. He was a columnist. He raised his family in Southern California and then moved up here later in his life and then fell in love with his second love. And they built a small farm in Upper Lake and enjoyed life together for many years. And one of the things that I got to know Gene on is he was my worth chair in Upper Lake. And he was very active, very organized, and he was an ardent, he always wanted to protect Upper Lake. And so we'll always remember Gene for his fire energy and his spark. And I'm pretty sure we have a video to add to this. And so if you're ready, Jake, go ahead.
All right, I'll start that video up. One second here.
Watching things from the beginning when they're proposed to the time when you finally get some action is like watching grass grow. But to see it finally happen, as we have in a couple of things we've done, is the best feeling in the world. I have to fall back on something I've said before to other people, and I try to practice myself. The only thing that will be remembered for when we leave the small blue planet spaces when we're gone is what we've done for other people. And the knowledge that doing something for other people, especially older folks like myself, gives me a good feeling.
Thank you for that, Supervisor Crandall. That's kind of heart-wrenching. I do want to do another moment of silence as well. This is fire season, and I know that just recently with the fires that are even impacting us due to the electrical wires over in Southern Oregon, that there have been two firefighter deaths. And I just want to remind everybody, please be as fire safe as you can be. These fires are dangerous not only to our communities and ourselves, but are very dangerous to our first responders. And so let's remember our first responders as well today. And usually I try to go in rotation, and I forget where I was last for the pledge allegiance. But Supervisor Crandall, please, if you could lead us in the pledge allegiance today.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving forward, are there any extra items from staff or board supervisors to add to this meeting?
None that I have today, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I was almost ignoring Zoom. Thank you for bringing me back to your attention. Okay, so nothing on number four. Let's go ahead and go to item number five. I believe that item 5.9 will be pulled. Are there any other items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda from board of supervisors?
Mr. Chair, there were two very minor corrections to 5.2 and 5.3, so we would like to pull them for a very quick discussion and make those corrections.
Thank you for reminding me of that. So 5.2, 5.3, and 5.9, again.
And then we're also pulling 5.12. That will return hopefully next week.
Okay.
And when you get to the regular agenda, I believe there may be, I believe the behavioral health director may want to pull a regular agenda item as well.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and get to that in a moment. Let's go ahead and finish the consent agenda. Let's open it up to the public, both in the Zoom room and the board chambers. Any items that anyone wishes to pull for further discussion from the consent agenda? If you are in the Zoom room, please dial *9 if you're calling via telephone, or click on the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I will move, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, pulling number items, or let's go approving item 5.1, 5.4 through 5.9. Wait, I mean, I'm sorry, 5.7, and then 5 point, now I got them all mixed up here. Apologize. 5 through 5 point, yeah, let me start over.
And actually, if I can interrupt you before you start, I forgot I did want to pull item 5.8 for a quick discussion. So you actually read my mind without me saying anything.
So, all right, 5.1, 5.4 through 5.7, 5.1, 0 through 5.11, and then 5.13 through 5.16. I think I got them.
I think so. So we have a motion by Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to take up those items a little bit later. We do have somebody here in the public that wishes to make a public comment. So let's go ahead and move on to 6.1. And we have John Drury, who went and submitted a citizen input request form. So you have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name's John Drury. I've been a county employee for over 16 years. I'm a Lakeport resident. Wanted to touch bases about the fiscal recovery funds that the county just got. I was doing, I've participated in county negotiations for many years as DSA president. One of the things that gets talked about often in negotiations related to county revenues is one-time money and how it can't be used a lot of times for compensation to its employees because it's one-time money, we can't count on it all the time. Specific to the fiscal recovery funds that the county just got, in the interim final rule that the U.S. Treasury had put out, it specifies, starting on page 45, about premium pay related to the essential workers that the county has. And I think it's a really great opportunity. We have kind of a newer board here and not necessarily doing things the way that things have always been done. And we have some one-time money that's come in that presents a great opportunity to be able to give back to your county employees, something that I've heard a lot of the board members refer to as the county's greatest asset that it has. So with that 12-point-something million dollars that the county has received, I hope that you guys would take into consideration the premium pay related to its essential workers, and that's for all of the county essential workers. That's all I have.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any further public comment? Again, if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or *9 if you're calling via telephone. Okay, looks like we're done with our public comment. And again, we're going to get to those consent agenda items a little bit later. We have our 9:06 a.m. item, so I'd like to get to that right away. Let's go ahead and move on with our 6.2, consideration of update on COVID-19 epidemiology.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Denise Palmero, Health Services Director. I'd just like to introduce Sarah. She is our epidemiologist, and she's going to be giving you an update on our COVID-19 data today. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm going to provide a brief Epi update of the rapidly evolving situation. I think I was here about a month ago, and a few things have changed, so I'm going to try to highlight those items for you here today. So we're just going to start with the indicators that I typically report. These are from the state website, covid19.ca.gov. And what we see on the left, the dark, the black line represents Lake County, and the lighter gray line represents the state and its testing. So we're looking at tests per 100,000. On the left, you can see here the decline in testing in Lake County since the surge in the winter. And then we've had some peaks and some recent increases in testing. At the same time, since really sort of mid-June, we've, we had a low of less than 1% testing positivity. That's increased over the last three weeks to a high, the most recent, of 6.3%, which is the highest you can see we've had since the surge this winter. And here you can see the state also at a low, about 1% for a couple of weeks, and they're also beginning to see an increase in testing positivity. Here is the Epi curve. As a reminder, this is looking at the number of new cases identified by episode date, which is either the day someone first experiences symptoms or their test date. And you can see, we've, we had a couple of weeks here in late spring, in May, in June, fewer than 20 cases identified per week, with a low of nine the week of June 13th. And in the last three weeks, we've seen an increase in new cases. Most recently, as of yesterday, have identified 36 cases for the week beginning on July 4th. So we're going to dive a little bit deeper into this recent increase and the recent cases before we move on to give you an update on vaccines. So here, just wanted to show the daily case rate in comparison to the state. So again, Lake County is the black line here, and the most recent daily case rate, the seven-day average, is 10.3 cases per 100,000. The state is closer, is between 3 and 4 per 100,000 right now. So went from a low in mid-June from about 1 up to about 10 cases per 100,000. This currently is the highest daily case rate in the state, again, for this period here, June 27th to July 3rd. I wanted to just show this, this table to highlight a few things. So for the most recent period, daily case rate, 10.4 per 100,000. That's 47 cases identified among Lake County residents with a testing positivity of about 6.2%. You can see that many of these other counties are in the Northern California region with some of the highest case rates in the state. And what I wanted to note on that is statewide, the state had a daily case rate of about 2 per 100,000 in mid-June, and that's nearly doubled in the last three weeks to about 4 per 100,000. And it's the Bay Area, Southern California, and the greater Sacramento region that's really doubled in the last three weeks. I want to be clear that these rates are still relatively low, so when I say doubled, doubled from 2 or 3 to 4 or 6 per 100,000. But I think it's just really important to note that we are starting to see increases regionally and statewide and draw attention to the increase in Lake County. Here, I'm showing you a look at some of your neighboring counties. So here it shows California in the blue line, like I mentioned before, a low about 2, starting to creep up to about 4 per 100,000. Orange here is Lake County, showing your low of about 1 per 100,000, and the increase over the last couple of weeks to over 10 per 100,000. And we continue to see cases identified every day, so I, you know, I don't think, we aren't, we aren't coming down yet. So we need to watch this really closely, and I'm going to speak to a couple of things I think that the county can focus on to address this increase. You can see Mendocino in green had their low sort of earlier in the spring and then increased prior to Lake County. And they started to see corresponding increases, COVID hospitalized patients in their county. And recently, Lake County has seen that as well, and I'll show a slide for Lake County. And I just mentioned that as, you know, that's a really, really helpful indicator, looking at hospitalizations due to, you know, if people aren't getting tested, the daily case rate is obviously can be an underestimate, but hospitalizations can be a really good metric of what's happening in terms of transmission in the community. Oh, and here we go. So here I'm showing Lake County's data from last spring. So here we are in the present day. So on July 11th, there were four COVID hospitalized patients in Lake County. You can see the surge here, the decrease, and a few blips through the spring. And this, to be clear, does not include any Lake County residents who may be hospitalized outside of the county. So continue to watch this and also watch the regional impact on hospitals.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question while you're on this slide? You said it doesn't count for those that are out of county. Do you have that full number of how many Lake County residents are hospitalized overall, not just hospitalized here in Lake County?
Yeah, the short answer, and I'll ask the team to jump in if I misreport this, the short answer is no, or sometimes. So the team does track that with the case investigation. However, when people get transferred out of county, we don't always know that, depends on resources available to track that, communication doesn't always happen back. So, you know, in the beginning of the pandemic, I knew we were tracking this really well. And then when the surge happened, there were other priorities. And the state data, how this system works is that hospitals report directly to the state, and it's not by county of residence. It's who's in a hospital bed in that county. So I don't believe we have that information collected in a systematic way, though I'll ask someone to jump in and let you know if I misreported that.
Yeah, the data is mainly, the data is mainly collected for hospital capacity, not necessarily for understanding how many are hospitalized from individual counties. So I get why that information is difficult to access.
So it's, again, like not a perfect indicator of transmission in Lake County because we don't know who's going out of county. I remember during the surge, we did look specifically when we were really concerned about healthcare capacity. I looked at who, when we were really collecting that data before we ran, you know, before there were other priorities. We were transferring at sort of the height of the surge, I believe about half of patients out of county. I think it was like about 20, 25% in Sonoma, about the same in Mendocino, and then mostly in the Bay Area region. So that's why I was looking at Mendocino, they've seen a slight increase, Sonoma seen a slight increase. There's still plenty of capacity. We're not obviously at surge levels, but it's just something good to watch. So lastly, before I talk about sort of the recent cases and the increase, wanted to share that we have 63 confirmed COVID deaths in Lake County. This has changed since we reported it about a month ago. It's standard best practice with any communicable disease to do a review of cases and deaths, and that's what's happened over the last couple of weeks. Many counties have undertaken that quality control effort as we've gotten through the surge and as we've gotten through the big vaccine push. And there's lots of reasons why it can be challenging to identify COVID deaths or any death due to communicable disease in real time, like we just talked about with hospitalizations out of county. Won't necessarily know if a resident who's transferred out of county and dies in a hospital, that death certificate is filed in that county. There's a process, there's a lab timed for that before it gets reported, and then we can identify it in the electronic death record system. And so the process that the health department has gone through is standard practice. It ensures that we don't have any duplicates, ensures that it is in fact a COVID death. And again, many other counties have embarked on this process really when there's, as there's been more capacity. So just a few slides, wanting to talk sort of real time right now because of the increase from about 1 per 100,000 to 10 per 100,000 over the last three weeks. So who are the recent cases? Like throughout the pandemic, the majority of the cases are young, 20 to 44 years of age, disproportionately so, so about 55% of these cases were 20 to 44, but only make up about 26% of the population. We've discussed this before, working age out about in the community. What I'll show later and really want to stress is that three out of five people roughly in this age group, 18 to 49, are completely unvaccinated. So I think focusing on vaccinations among young people is really critical as we move into the summer, as the Delta variant increases across the state and very likely in Lake County, it's more transmissible. And so I think it's really, really critical for, for all groups, but particularly this age group that's been disproportionately impacted throughout the pandemic, to be protected by the vaccine. Roughly, cases in the last month have matched the racial/ethnic composition of the county. So about 2/3 of the cases were white, non-Hispanic, almost 3 in 10 were Latino, and 6% were Native American, 4% were Native American, non-Hispanic. And then by geography, where do cases, where do these recent cases live? About 1 in 4 live in Clear Lake, 1 in 5 live in Lakeport, and 1 in 6 live in Kelseyville. Of course, this doesn't mean that the people became infected in these places, lots of different places, potential places of exposure, but this is where, this is where cases, recent cases have lived. And then our data on mode of transmission, we are missing data on about 50 cases of these recent cases on likely mode of transmission. So they are limited, but I just wanted, the data we do have, what we see is presumed community transmission and household contact remain the leading ways people are becoming sick. Community contact, occupational exposure, so in your workplace, and then congregate living settings, six cases have been recently identified. So I'm going to pivot now to talking about the vaccination coverage. So 50% of people 12 and older, so of the eligible population, are fully vaccinated in Lake County. That's nearly 28,000 people. These are people who are, you know, better protected from becoming infected as well as the Delta variant. 61% of Californians, in contrast, are fully vaccinated, but I wanted to give you a bigger picture. There's a lot here, but essentially I'm showing you all 50 counties and the state. And so let's look on the left. So in Lassen County, 30% of the population is fully vaccinated, up to over 80% of the population in Marin County is fully vaccinated. In Lakes here, about in the middle, just shy of the middle of the pack here, at 50% of folks 12 and older are fully vaccinated. And here's the state at 61%. And then this should look familiar. Looking by geography, we see 55% of the eligible population, or 55% of this 23,000, is still unvaccinated in these zip, these six zip codes over here, 95422, 95423, and these four others. And then among the 31,000 eligible population living in these six zip codes, 44% remain unvaccinated. And I will just close by stressing this again. Great progress, 50% of eligible population is fully protected, but this 59%, 3 in 5 people, 18 to 49, are not vaccinated. And I think this is a really critical moment. The Delta variant is the predominant strain nationwide. It's increasing in California. It's been identified in Lake County and the region. It is more transmissible. We know that the vaccine, particularly being fully vaccinated, will protect people against the variant. So I think there's great, you know, focusing where most cases are coming from this age group, so really focusing on vaccination. And of course, just want to reiterate, as we have throughout, that people of older age, higher risk for severe complications and deaths. So any work to be done to target people over the age of 65 who still haven't been vaccinated, I think, is a really critical intervention at this moment. So I'll close, and I think hand it back to Denise, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Anything from Director Palmero before we start asking questions from the board?
No, I just wanted to give an update. We have been working with the schools to get the school-aged population vaccinated. We've gone through the majority of the schools already. Our next two vaccination clinics are Monday, July 19th, 10 to 3, at Lower Lake High School in the new gym. And then on Wednesday, 7:21, 4 to 7, at Kelseyville High School in the Student Resource Center. We will be providing Pfizer second doses as well as first doses as needed, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. So you don't have to be a student to come to these clinics. They're for the community that we're trying to boost the vaccination rates in. And then we will be looking at opening up clinics here at the Health Department throughout the week. We also still have the OptinServe in Lower Lake. They're doing testing on Monday and Thursday, and they're providing vaccines Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. So just want to give your board that update.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board, comments? Supervisor Pisca?
Sarah, I have a question. Was, just to be clear, was Lake County the highest with positivity rate in the state?
The daily case rate for June 27th to July 3rd is the highest in the state. I would have to look, I'll look back. I don't know if the testing positivity was the highest, but it was definitely towards the top. But the daily case rate has been, for a couple of days, has been the highest, and I think we'll continue to see that at least for a couple of days.
Thank you for that clarification. Oh, I got one.
Any further questions?
Oh, one more question. So just, do we have any idea how many transfers the hospitals are making? I know you don't have that data, but just, are they providing any of that information?
They're not providing it directly to the Health Department. They report directly to the state, and then there's a lab time where we get the data later. So as Sarah indicated, it's a state reporting system, and we don't get that information directly.
Okay, thank you.
So I have not heard anything about the hospitals. Are they looking at potential surge preparedness at this moment in time? Are they not discussing that? I know that was a large part of what occurred between November and January, and there was a lot of concern about the capacity. Is that something that is being discussed with the Public Health Department as well as, I believe the EOC is still occurring? I know that I'm no longer taking part in that.
We have not had any recent contact with the hospitals. They do reach out to us if they feel like they're starting to get, where they need to have surge capacity assistance. And we have not had that conversation recently, but I'm happy to check in with them and see how they're doing. We do talk to them about once a week at least, so, but they have not mentioned any concerns for surge at this time.
Okay. And then the, I forget what the N was for your data between the dates that you were looking at. What percentage of those that are testing positive? What percentage of those that are testing positive have been vaccinated?
I don't have that data in front of me, so I can't speak. So the N for June 10th through July 9th was about 100, I think it was 139 cases. The number of people testing positive who have been fully vaccinated is extremely, extremely, extremely low. I didn't look for this period specifically at the state level. They, a couple of weeks ago, reported that the daily case rate in unvaccinated individuals was about four to five per 100,000, and the daily case rate in fully vaccinated individuals was about 0.5 per 100,000, so significantly lower. And then even among those cases who vaccinated cases, again, a very, very small percent of people asymptomatic, mildly symptomatic, no severe disease or outcomes.
And I think that in the next time that we have another presentation, I think that information is really useful to share with the public, just because I think that our conversation still revolves around vaccination versus not vaccination and the impacts and the effects to that. And I know that somebody has brought up and most likely will bring up the concerns of the vaccine, if there's numbers that we can bring next time, so that we have public health information on those numbers to provide the safety of the vaccinations. Everyone is physiologically different and reacts slightly differently, and some will have small effects and some may have large effects. But if we have actual numbers versus just rhetoric, that would be very useful to bring to the board.
Right. I'm happy to bring that, and I just got a note from the team that of the hundreds of cases we've had since the rollout of the vaccine, we've maybe had about five cases among vaccinated individuals, again, out of the hundreds. But I appreciate the sentiment that we can bring hard numbers next.
Right, right. And as you said, the acuteness of the symptoms are typically much lower. That doesn't mean that they're always going to be, but I think that that's what I'm reading coming from CDC and coming from CDPH as well, and that's California Department of Public Health. Any other questions? Supervisor Simon?
Just to follow up on some of the contracts, I know we contracted with some outside agencies just for messaging, and I think Chair Sabate hit it on the head. You know, the more information and education we can get out there to the folks on the vaccines, the effectiveness, and then getting that information so people can make those decisions. We do know that their own personal decision, but we do know education is a big part of that. And I just would, I guess this would be for Denise, just following up, I know, I think we had two different agencies that we hired for contracting, both with the Native American community, the Hispanic community, to really get this messaging out there. And just wondering where those contracts are, or if we could get an update on that on our, at our next meeting.
I'm happy to do that, Supervisor Simon. We have actually three contracts currently. We're working with the County Office of Ed, Healthy Start for the Hispanic population. We're working with another agency for the Native American population, and then we've been working with Hope Rising, who's also been helping get out a broader, more blanketed type messaging. So we will bring back data at the next update for you on how many people that they have served and what they've been doing.
Thank you for that. Any further comments or questions?
And I want to do add to the context of messaging with hospitals. I think that part of the issue that we've had in the past is the fear that our hospitals don't have the capacity to take care of the patient load. And so if we can get the hospitals involved, because it would help them in the long run as well to be a part of that messaging, that way we're not all working in silos individually, we can, we can have a well-rounded, robust messaging going out to the public.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. If there's no further comments or questions from the board, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. We have hands up already in the Zoom room, so we'll start there. Let's start with phone 4627. If we can please unmute. And you have three minutes. And if you can please state your first and last name. If you are on the phone, I believe star six is the way to unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. This is, good morning, this is Tom Slate, and thank you so much for the report, but as a layperson, I have a kind of a two-part question that would be really helpful. And I keep hearing the term cases over, you know, over and over and over. What is a case? How is a case determined? And along with that, I noticed in the grand jury report, it said in the jail, they were using something called a PCR test. So is there, you know, the county doing in the jail too? But the really, the fundamental question is, how is, what is the process to determine that somebody or something is a case?
Thank you for the question.
Denise, I can take that if you'd like. Yes, we use-
Sure. Either that or Carolyn Holiday, our Director of Nursing, is on to you. So go ahead, Sarah. I defer.
Just briefly, Carolyn, you can jump in. Yes, we use, but case means that it's a PCR lab confirmed COVID infection among a Lake County resident.
Okay, you know what, it was kind of fuzzy. You know, I apologize, but it was a little fuzzy on the phone. Could you repeat that a little slower? I didn't quite get it.
Happy to. So a case, the case, the case definition is that there has been a PCR lab confirmed test result that a person has COVID and they live in Lake County. So it is lab confirmed. So if someone has a rapid test, for example, they will need, and that is positive, they will need to get a lab confirm, a confirmatory test to, for us to count them as a case. That is the case definition at the local, state, and national level.
Okay, so am I, do I understand, if they have a rapid test though, they would still need to confirm it with the PCR test? Is that-
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that answers, that's very helpful. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your, thank you for your questions. Let's move on to Fairlight. If you can please give us your first and last name.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. This is Fairlight Algren, and I really don't think three minutes is enough. I really had to cut this down. You're going to have to hear from me again. I'm sorry. This isn't going to be enough, but-
You're taking up some, some very valuable time, so please get started.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to my statement so I can read it for you. Okay, thank you. I'm ready. 10 years ago, I took full responsibility, personal responsibility for my own health and for my family's health when I studied holistic health through Institute for Integrative Nutrition. I was exposed to hundreds of alternative healing modalities and encouraged to try them on and see how my body responded to each. In doing this, I learned how to work with my body and listen to what it needs. Since that time, I'm happy to report, I have not been sick, except once, in December 2019, which I'm pretty confident now in hindsight was likely one of the first early quote-unquote cases. I remember being very surprised to even having been sick at all, since my immune system's normally quite robust. However, I was going through some hard times, my immune system was vulnerable, I was sick for maybe a week, after which I did an Ayurvedic detox and bounced back with incredible strength, stronger than before. I'm convinced that the lifelong immunity I now have in my cellular memory is far superior to any man-made injection that is strain-specific and which manually overrides the natural immunity my intelligent body provides by working in harmony with its host of microbes and organisms. I speak to you today to demand my sovereign right to decide what is right for my body and my child. I will never consent to forced digital IDs, which I believe are the end goal of the release of this engineered biological weapon, which I never, I'm sorry, and I will never consent to forced vaccines or medical interventions, whether experimental or FDA-approved and mandated. I take personal responsibility for my health, my loved ones. Please stop parroting the false logic that herd immunity requires naturally recovered persons to override their dynamic immunity. Please stop saying we need everyone to protect the vulnerable by getting the shot. There are solutions we can reach to protect the vulnerable without putting the healthy at risk. For example, my grandfather had emphysema in his last years, needed to be on oxygen. His immune system was compromised. We knew that because of this, we had to be careful not to allow sick people into his presence. We didn't demand that the others outside our family change their behavior, shutter their businesses, or get a quote-unquote vaccine. With freedom comes responsibility. I take mine for myself and for my loved ones, and I invite us all to do this.
Your heart.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And we will move on to the next one, which is Julia Bono.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, if you can speak a little bit louder, please.
Um, can you turn my microphone up?
Perfect.
Well, I'll just, I'll just speak louder.
Perfect.
A baby yelling, this is working for others, you might try. I do not have a webcam. Anyway, my name is Reverend Julia Bono, and I would like to speak about the ethics of vaccination. Has the board considered that some Lake County residents might have an ethical and/or religious objection to the fact that animals, including fully sentient primates like ourselves who value their lives, were used without their consent and subsequently all killed in order to briefly test each of the currently available COVID vaccines? No long-term tests were done, and many hundreds of innocent lives were indecently kept in cages and prematurely terminated. Politicians and other decision-makers like yourselves must also recognize how much time, money, and innocent lives are wasted in the current animal testing paradigm. Research shows that over 90% of new drugs fail in human trials, even though they've already been proved safe and effective in experiments on animals. Furthermore, over 90% of highly promising basic scientific discoveries, most of which involve animal experimentation, fail to enter routine clinical use within 20 years. Between 50% and 89% of preclinical research is not reproducible with animal experimentation implicated as a significant factor. Not only is such animal testing cruel and murderous, in my opinion, which some people who care about animals naturally consider unethical, but the differences among species are so vast that results in animals are at best a very poor approximation of what will happen in humans, or at worst dangerously misleading. Those who ethically boycott the harmful use of animals are known as vegans. As a happy side effect of their ethical stance, their healthier plant-based diet also largely immunizes them against respiratory diseases like COVID, from which a recent scientific study published in the BMJ Journal of Nutrition Prevention and Health showed that vegans have a 73% lower chance of suffering moderate to severe consequences from. Furthermore, as an example of the serious health issues that can arise in humans from the COVID vaccines that were not highlighted in animal testing, my sister-in-law suffered a life-threatening blood clot in her heart just days after taking the Moderna vaccine that she is still recovering from months later. Furthermore, another close friend of mine was stricken by Bell's palsy and had half of his face paralyzed shortly after being vaccinated against COVID. The CDC's own VAERS database found 438,441 cases in which adverse events associated with COVID-19 vaccines occurred as of early July, including over 9,000 deaths and over 7,000 permanent disabilities. I therefore maintain that not only is animal testing unacceptably cruel and harmful toward animals from a strict ethical standpoint, but the currently available vaccine products need years more testing in paid and fully informed human volunteers, not just six months or less, before they are deemed suitable and safe for mass distribution, distribution among humans in this county and elsewhere. With all that noted, I do however support incumbent voluntary social distancing protocols, including homeschooling, to slow and spread, slow the spread of a typically rather mildly symptomatic disease like COVID and avoid overwhelming the healthcare system. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you very much for your comments. Moving on to, I think we heard from phone 6205 already? Am I incorrect on that? Let's just go ahead and go, since that's the next one on my list. Phone 6205, if you've already spoken, if you can please be succinct on your second turn, or else you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Thank you so much. I haven't spoken yet. This is Bart Levinson, and I'd like to bring everyone's attention to, and Sarah, please, to an article in the Press Democrat Saturday, July 10th, where they reported that there were five new deaths in Sonoma, and that one of those, one out of the five, had been fully vaccinated, and that one out of the five was under 50 years old, and all were men. So I just wanted to ask Sarah to please bring, as you asked for Mr. Sabatier, more specifics when she comes next to the board. I think that they are really important for us to know.
Thank you for your comments. Next-
Thank you.
Next is Will Tuttle. And you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I wanted to respond to a few things. Sarah had said about there's fewer cases when people are vaccinated, and I think it's very important to point out that the CDC is being very deceptive in their policy, because when people are unvaccinated, the way it's always been, the amplification rate that they use in the PCR test has been set at around between 35 and 40 amplifications, which creates a huge number of false positives. So you say, oh, this person has a case, they're sick, even though they're fine, they don't feel anything wrong with them, but it's a case. And when someone is vaccinated, the CDC now has changed the amplification rate to only 25 amplifications. So instead of 35 or 40, it's only 25. So now miraculously, all these vaccinated people, they never have a case because they changed the amplification rate to a low level, which guarantees that they won't show up as a case. So there's deliberate deception going on here with that, and I think it's very important to understand that. The other thing is, I was glad to hear one of the other people commenting and pointing out the fact that these are very dangerous. I already have 9,000 people dead. Europe is 17,500 are dead, 1.5 million people with injuries, and in Europe, and about, as she said, 440,000 roughly with injuries, about half lose of serious injuries. And according to many experts in this field, that there is, this is just the tip of the iceberg, it's going to be increasing as time goes on. Robert Malone has said that he's the inventor of the mRNA vaccine, and many others, that these are going to be sterilizing people and killing a lot more people. So there's quite a lot of understanding growing that this is a genocidal effort that's happening. And I want, I have a question just in closing to, since I live in South Lake County, to Supervisor Simon. I just want to know if you, you know, there's been, it's well-known, there's been a lot of genocide by the government against American Indians over the, over the decades. And if we have a genocide unfolding right now against human beings, and if you become aware of this through your interactions with people that you know and love, that get sick, that get sterile, that, you know, are sterilized or they can't function anymore, they die, would you be willing to make a motion at the Board of Supervisors meeting to stop this rollout of vaccines? Would you be willing to make a motion and, and say we shouldn't have any education to promote these when they're so harmful? And the, and this is just the tip of the iceberg of the harm that's coming. What would it, I guess that's my question. When you, you know, when you really, if you really understood this, would you be willing to make such a motion to- really understood this, would you be willing to make such a motion to save the people of Lake County and to talk to other supervisors to do such a thing? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Mr. Tuttle, you know, I've heard you chime into these meetings, you know, week after week. And, you know, first you said you're a doctor, and I don't know if you practice medicine, and then we clarified that issue, that I don't think you're treating folks at this point. So to hear you use the word genocide so lightly is definitely offensive to myself, and I think the rest of the Native population in this community. And every week, you just, you just never amazes me what comes out of your mouth. Moving forward with this and seeing the harm that this has done to our tribal members here in Lake County, our tribal, you know, the reality of it. I've had family members that at the beginning of this, you know, did not think that getting a vaccine was good. Now, we've had folks that have been affected in my community. We've had young folks have been affected, we've had folks that were, less than a year ago, completely healthy, and now on oxygen, unable to move, in hospitals. It's unbelievable what is happening. So as I moved through this pandemic, which I was never expected to deal with when I was elected, I absolutely looked to the science. At this point, from my point of view, we are doing the right thing. It is an individual choice, but we do know that the effects of the vaccine are more positive than negative. And if it came to light that there was something that was drastically known and scientifically backed up, not just personal or political feelings on this, would definitely do everything I could do to do the right thing. And I think at this point, we are moving in that direction, educating folks, giving them the opportunity to make their own personal decisions is what we need to do. It's not how we believe, it's what we see around us. And I've seen people affected by this, and I would hate for anybody to have to lose somebody. From day one, that's what I've taken it on. Life is more important than having a personal feeling. And if it ever got to that point, I would. But each week that you chime in here, I hope at some point, when you ask us to look at your information, which we all do, we receive it, we read through it, we try and educate ourselves, I wish that you would do the same on your side. Look at and understand how this is affecting people's lives, how they're losing individuals, and understand the other side of the argument. Everybody has their own personal decision, and I don't think you've ever heard me say I'm going to mandate anything for anybody. What I'm going to do is try and protect my community, my family members, and keep doing that every day. I am not a doctor, I have never said that setting here. What I know is the information we're being given, I think, is the right information. I'll continue to educate myself and try and push the message that I feel will hopefully save lives and save communities. We've all been through it, recently lost a member of my family, and there's no greater pain, no matter what we do, political aspirations, money, nothing is more important than family. And trying to protect your family is something that I always try and do, and my community. So, Mr. Tuttle, you can ask me whatever questions you want, but I would appreciate it if you yourself would not use the word genocide in such an easy way, because it did happen, it happened here to the Native community, part of that. Bloody Island is one of the most devastating things in Lake County that's ever happened, and that's just one of the small stories of the devastation of this country and its people, the indigenous people that were here before. So I don't know what to tell you, but I'm trying to do the right thing, and I'll continue doing that. Your words frustrate me, that's all that I can say at this point.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I share that frustration with you as well. Amanda Brock, you have three minutes.
Hi, good morning, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for holding this meeting today and opening us to the public. Thanks for hearing us all. Thank you for continuing to protect our choices and give us options for our freedom of health and medical sovereignty. I do want to agree with everything that Fairlight and Bart and the others have said before me. I want to bring it to the attention that the PCR tests are widely known to present 97% false positives when run over a 35-cycle threshold. So I would like to ask the question whether or not the board is willing to make motions to change the way the PCR tests are implemented in revealing cases, and whether or not they're aware of whether a vaccinated or unvaccinated person is treated with a certain threshold cycle. That being said, I want to speak further to, as someone who considers myself half Native American, my father is a physician, my mother is a labor and delivery nurse, and I have been immersed in the medical field for my entire 30 years. I have been studying Ayurvedic nutrition for the last four years. I've studied nutrition, environmental ecology, and I've been a lifelong organic farmer. And in my personal experience, the only time I'd ever taken a flu shot, I got sick. Other than that, I have, like Fairlight, have never been sick. And except for, I had a very similar story in the winter of 2019, actually in January. I had a week of illness, and I detoxed with apple cider vinegar and garlic and cayenne, and I got better. And I, like her, feel balanced back, stronger than ever. And I've had my opportunity, plenty of opportunity, to do a lot of research. And in speaking to what we see around us in terms of tragedy, it seems like maybe 63 people have died in Lake County, but as Will said, 1.5 million people are already dead in Europe from a shot, an experimental shot that's neither FDA-approved nor approved or accepted by the majority of the people around, nor are there clinical tests to show us the effects, other than the ferrets and apparently chimpanzees who have 100% death rate. So I'd like to know what the VAERS data is for people in Lake County who have been vaccinated, maybe for the next meeting. And I would like to know what research the board is doing to understand the effects of vaccines in terms of its history and causing autism. If that's my thought, I'll stop there.
Yep, that's your three minutes. Supervisor Simon wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I guess, I just want to make it very clear. I have been vaccinated, to get the Moderna vaccine, I got both my shots, I am fully vaccinated. So if you want to talk about research, you have not taken the vaccine, which you can do over the next four years, which I am sitting here on this podium, I got the vaccine. So I will let you know. That's the experiment, that's the education I'm doing. I took the vaccine. I encouraged folks to take the vaccine that were in my family, they can make their own decision, but I did it as a leader. So the education I'm having is, I got the Moderna vaccine. You know, I know you guys who are anti-vaccine or say, do not take it. What you will be able to do is watch the effects on me, you know, that's where it's at. I am vaccinated, I have taken it. I understood the risks when I took the vaccine, but I also understood the risk of getting COVID, especially being a tribal individual with the history, you know, of diabetes in my family, other things, and it outweighed the risk. So I took it. So if you're asking me what, what I'm doing to educate myself, I took it. I'm understanding what's happening, and you can watch those effects right here, every Tuesday for the next four years.
Thank you, Supervisor. I see no further comment on the Zoom room. Anyone wish to make a public comment on this agenda item in the board chambers? Okay, so let's go ahead and bring it back. I, I think that there's unfortunately some large misunderstandings, and I'm just going to say it, listening to the wrong political cues or the wrong scientific cues, nobody's forcing anybody to do anything. We are seeing changes in the positive way due to the vaccine. If you don't want to take it, no one is going to force you. No one is chip IDing you. I still can't believe that's still a thing, when you're carrying around a telephone that has the chip already in your hand that you put in your pocket every single day. Nobody needs to do that, you're already being tracked. You made that decision on your own by going to a cellular phone shop and signing up. It is saddening for me when, yes, some people who have the vaccine will still get sick because it's 95%. It's not 100%, it's 95%, and that's only for specific vaccines. It goes a little bit lower with different vaccines. I think the Moderna was 95, Pfizer was 92, or something along those lines. But the fact that we are only seeing unvaccinated people, and it's a choice, and you're arguing that the vaccination is what's killing you, and I don't think you understand what 1.5 million people looks like, but you, we're not seeing stories of huge cemeteries propping up in the middle of Europe to bury these people, like we saw in India, like we saw in Houston, like we saw where there were refrigerator trucks because they could not hold on to the amount of dead bodies that they had. We can only deal with the natural occurrence of what happens with birth and death. When there's intense deaths, it is difficult to handle, because we're not prepared for those things. It's, it's, it's hard to have a conversation where nothing that is being said is believed, but yet someone out there has your ear and you believe them. The FBI and the CIA can't even coordinate, but yet this worldwide event is coordinated. Makes no sense to me at all. It is not a mandate, you are not being forced. I know I've had conversations with some of the people that have spoken today, they will share with me information from the CDC, which I read up, but when I share information from the CDC, nope, that's not the kind of information they want to follow. The CDC claims we had a 27% increase in death rates, and it's a term that I don't remember the specific term, but of death rates compared to 2019 and 2020. What do you think that's due to? We have to figure out how to become safer. You could be as holistic as you want, but maternal death rates are down because of science, infant death rates are down because of science. Yes, it's good to be healthy, please be healthy, but recognize that we are living the way we are living today because of science. And sometimes, yes, having a cellular phone to your face may not be the healthiest thing for you to deal with, having a microwave in your house might not be the healthiest thing to deal with, but look at 1930 compared to 2020, and what we deal with as a, as a population and how long we live, that is not a natural occurrence, that is science. It's okay to question stuff, you should question stuff, but to state that there's 1.5 million deaths in Europe is just incorrect. It's not true. The VAERS, I never learned about until this vaccine came out. Why? Because they give it to you and they say, please tell us if anything happens. That's you and me, that's not your doctor, that's not a science person who has studied medicine, who goes on VAERS to claim that something happened to you. That is up to us as individuals to make our claims. There's a difference between causation and correlation, and I think that is where we dropped the ball on critical thinking, that just because I did A and B happened to me, that it's only because I did A. That does not always happen, and that is not always the case. It has to be studied further than just the simple data that they throw in front of us. Again, it's good to ask questions, and I hope that we can bring more information, but to make statements that are absolutely not factual is so much worse than, than, than what you believe. It's very frustrating. Any further comments before we close this item? Sorry for being on my soapbox for a second there. We are going to move on. Thank you so much, Director Pomeroy, thank you, Sarah, again for the information, and I believe we will have you on next week's agenda so we can get some of that data. Let us know if you need more time to be able to gather it, but I think you should have access to that information.
Yeah, we'll bring it back, for sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing Melissa Fulton For Her Years of Service to Lake County. And Supervisor Scott, would you like to read that proclamation?
Sure.
I do not have it with me.
It's in front of you.
Oh. I'm hiding it.
Can you sign it?
I did yesterday, I believe. Yes, I did.
All right. So if Melissa wants to join me up here, I'm glad you could make it in person today with us. And you have quite a group here, and I know that the Zoom room is absolutely full of people, and if we could change your mind and make you stay, I think we all would be trying to do that. So here's a proclamation, Board of Supervisors County of Lake State of California, recognizing the retirement of Melissa Fulton and honoring her many years of outstanding services to Lake County. Whereas Melissa Fulton has passionately served alongside citizens, Melissa Paviltes and businesses owners since October 1990 to create and promote a healthy climate for businesses and commerce throughout Lake County. Whereas Executive Director and Chief Executive Officer of the Chamber of Commerce, Melissa Fulton's dedicated over 27 years to promote and advocate for the best interest of our business community. Whereas Melissa Fulton has represented the interests of commerce within Lake County throughout leadership over the participation on numerous boards and committees, including but not limited to, Lake County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, Lake County Rodeo Association Board of Directors, Rotary of Cleve of Lakeport, Lakeport Main Street Association Board of Directors, Lakeport Economic Development Advisory Committee. Whereas Melissa Fulton's leadership excellence and overall spirit contribute significantly to successful events and promotions intended to attract tourism and businesses. Her hands-on role significantly contributed to the success of Lake County at the Lake County State Fair. Whereas Melissa Fulton advocates for the County Certified Tourism Ambassadors Program, CTA program. Ultimately, her tendency and operational oversight led to the County CTA chapter being the only chapter in the nation network that is run by an all-volunteer network group. So that is the work of you and everybody, all the volunteers here in Lake County, following your lead, because I don't think anybody has ever told you no. And I think that's why you stand here, because I don't think I've ever told you no either, and I've done some crazy stuff. Whereas Melissa Fulton's dedication is an example to her employees, business owners, and volunteers. We applaud her many contributions, expertise, compassion, and generosity. Now therefore, be proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Melissa Fulton for her years of dedication, services, and wish her the best in your retirement, passed and adopted, this 13th day of July 2021.
It's, it's been my pleasure, it's been my passion, it was never a job. And I know that even at times in these chambers, when we were on different sides, the supervisors and the chamber, we always came away friends, never enemies, we respected each other, and I have always known that everyone who differs in their opinion with ours or mine as an individual, their passion to make this county the best it can be is the same as mine. So if someone had told me all those years ago that I would have all the opportunity to contribute, I would have told them they were crazy. But I am blessed in everything that I've been able to do, and... But um, I am blessed in everything that I've been able to do and your appreciation means so much. And uh, so thank you to everyone who is here and on Zoom. Because um, again, I love everything I've been allowed to do and I appreciate all the board members that I've had over these years. And they didn't always agree with me and I didn't always agree with them, but we're still friends. And um, I don't know what else to say. I truly appreciate the recognition, but as always, it's the team. It's always the team. And I am blessed to have a great team in the office today and I know that they will get a good leader going forward and the chamber, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce will continue to be an asset to this county. So thank you so much.
With a mic up, anybody in the, in the audience here that'd like to say something?
Melissa, I, I want to echo your comments. You and I both have the gift of speaking our minds, sometimes for wonderful reasons and sometimes we regret it a little bit. But yet, while we both spoke freely through my years of serving my community and your years of serving your community, uh, we still remain friends and I appreciate that. And I look forward to hearing of your new endeavors a- as you move forward and I hope that we continue to stay in touch. So thank you. Supervisor Pyska.
One of the great things about being in a small county is one person can make a big impact and you really have, Melissa, you set a gold standard for service and I really want to thank you for um the time that you've, we've gotten to know each other over the last few years and for all of your years of service. And I, I really wish you um a wonderful, joyful retirement in your travels.
Thank you.
Supervisor Grant.
Melissa, I want to give you, I want, I want to give you your blessings. Thank you for all the work you've done. I want to attest to disagreements and still coming away friends because I remember during a blue collar committee, you really let me have it and for good reason. However, afterwards you, you came, you came out saying, you know, I'm not mad at you. I'm mad at the situation. We, we just need, need to continue on and do right and figure out how to do this together. We can disagree and I always appreciated that about you. And uh, I look forward to seeing what you'll be doing in your, in your free time now.
Melissa, I just want to say thank you too. Everything that you do is always promoting Lake County. Every time we had a conversation, it didn't matter. And through the pandemic, yes, there were challenges, but we were all learning and working in the same direction. I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done and you gave me a memory that I'll never forget. I had to kiss one of our local bass. And I'd never done anything like, Melissa, yep, she asked, I said yes. So it'll be a memory that I have forever. So um, all the unique work you've done, just can't say how much I appreciate it. And I know uh, even if folks don't know who are, who you are at this point as you're retiring, you, you have just left a legacy for Lake County and uh, big shoes to fill. So, and you're always welcome uh, at our operation down at Twin Pine. If you're ever coming, if you're traveling, you're stopping through, just check in and um, I'll make sure that you get the treatment that you deserve as a Lake County long-term legend. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we already asked if there was anybody in the boardroom that wished to make a comment. Uh, we do have a hand up here in the Zoom room, so let's go ahead and get started there. Todd Metcalfe.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, Melissa, you probably don't remember me. And you're probably wondering why, why I'm even here as the Director of Behavioral Services. But a million years ago, I, I helped open and oversaw operations of the Lake County Visitor Center in Lucerne. And I can remember you were just so helpful, encouraging and supportive because I didn't know what the heck I was doing. And I'll, I'll never forget that, that you were just there to answer questions and, and help me along. And I just want to thank you for all you have done for our community and thank you for the support that you gave me then, when I didn't know what I was doing. So I wish you all the best in the next chapter of your, your life. Um, and thank you again for everything, Melissa.
All right, let's go ahead and go to the chamber. I think I saw a hand and I mistook it for just a cell phone. If you wish to come to the podium, please come on up.
All right, first of all, I need to try to hold together. I'm Chuck Sabrina. And I'm going to have a hard time with this. And Melissa and I are going to be trialing together. I had a distinct opportunity of helping her when she sold her Hill House, cleaning out the barn and cleaning out the garage. And when you say she has a passion, well, she says she has a passion for what she does anywhere she's ever been. And I've seen it all, all the plaques, all the proclamations, everything since her young days until now. You cannot believe how, what a difference she's made in each community that she has lived. And she always had that drive, always had that passion. She took something on and the, uh, places were better for her being there. It's such an honor for, to know that she loves me and it's great that I love her. And I swear, I will always take care of her for the community and for ourselves. And we're going to have a wonderful time. And I just wanted to say that, that I love you and uh, things are going to be real well, but her passion has been all life, her whole life. It's amazing to see the things that I've seen, her and John, and they had such a great life together. And for me to be able to carry on that wonderful life, I'm just truly blessed. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other comments? All right. Melissa, thank you for everything. So we're going to move on to item 6.4, our 9:30 AM item, Public Hearing, City concurrently as Clear Lake Keys, CSA number 1, 2, 6, 13, 20 and 21, Board of Supervisors, Kelseyville County Water Works District 3 and Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors. Consideration of A, Resolution Confirming Collections Of Annual Lighting Fees. B, Resolution Confirming Collections Of Delinquent Water Fees. C, Resolution Confirming Collections Of Delinquent Water And Sewer Fees. And D, Resolution Of Delinquent Sewer Fees For Lake County Sanitation District. Let's start with part A and welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is a relatively standard uh process that we do every year. Part A is attaching the fees for our lighting districts to the tax roll. So that's how the lighting bills get paid, gets put on the property taxes for those parcels within the lighting districts. Um, so any questions on item A?
Nope. Looks uh, like the usual thing that we do, uh, putting it on the property tax roll and any questions from the public, since we have none up here at the board? And I would say, let's bring you back and take action on A. Offer the resolution? All right, Supervisor Scott has offered the resolution. Roll call, please.
Okay, uh, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Randall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Item number B um is a resolution uh for rolling delinquent and I believe B is for the water districts, yes. So the CSAs, uh, so the Board of Supervisors sits as the Board of Directors for the various water districts or county service areas that we represent. And uh, item B is the resolution, we do this typically annually, um, to roll delinquent water bills. So if someone is more than 60 days delinquent, um, and they haven't contacted us, we do a lot of outreach with customers, uh, multiple mailings, um, notification of this public hearing to try to work with them to get their water bill current or get a payment plan installed. But um, if that is not successful and they're still uh, delinquent at the time that we are looking to roll the tax roll, um, for property owners, we attach that water bill to their tax roll.
Any questions on part B? So what is the increase? Uh, and I'm just going to apologize to the board. I'm kind of speaking uh generally about B, C and D at this moment in time, since they're all delinquent um bills that we're going to be discussing. What, what kind of increase have we seen in this past year? Uh, I don't want to say due to COVID, but during a year of uh tumultuous financial struggles.
So for last year, for 2020 fiscal year, um, and we typically do this at the end of the fiscal year. So last year, um, our first aging report, uh, which is uh what we rolled to determine delinquencies, um, usually when we run that first aging report and send out notifications, uh, there is uh some compliance, usually about 20% compliance. And so then the amount that actually gets rolled onto the tax roll is usually lower. But uh, for the 2020 fiscal year, our first aging for all water districts and sewer districts uh was uh $918,000. And for 2021, our first aging report is 1.28 million. So we've seen about a $300,000 increase or about a 30% increase in potential delinquencies.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask that question is I know there's been a lot of programs out there to help people pay their utility bills. There's programs out there for people to help pay their rent that might be overdue. Uh, there's still some protections for that. I'm not looking to uh ask the board to follow that same direction because i- in my opinion, it's, it's a struggle because what's the purpose of paying your bills if someone else is going to pay it for you? I think that people need to be responsible uh for the bills that they have. But a collections puts people kind of on their heels and has other potential ramifications uh for them as well. Uh, I would like to see if we can defer the collections of delinquencies and look to see if maybe um Director Harder can speak with uh administration uh to figure out how to keep special districts whole. Uh, I know that we have some American Rescue Plan funds that's available, uh, just because adding more on top of the burden of what people may have struggled with financially during COVID-19, which while those rules and regulations didn't come directly from us, we did participate in saying, yes, we're going to follow state law. We did not buck the trend. We did not say ignore it. There were ramifications financially to the people that we represent. And so sending those people to collections because of unpaid bills and seeing an increase, which is most likely due to the ramifications of COVID-19 restrictions, uh, I'm, I'd like for us to take a look at deferring these, um, sending these to collections or putting it on the tax roll and looking to keep special districts whole in other ways while still giving them basically another year to pay off or another, extending that time period for them to pay off their delinquent bills. I just think that that's some, that, that makes me feel better to go about it that way. Um, and it seems fair to go about it that way. And I'm wondering if, what the board has to say on that? Or if you just want to move forward in the direction that we're, that is proposed to us?
I agree with you on that Supervisor Sabatier, I really do.
You know, I, I, I agree to the point that um, you know, many are suffering because of COVID and um, that you, we need to be looking at directions to help people. But I think, I mean, how many times did you reach out to these customers looking to, to help them with payment plans or other services? And I, I think if we didn't do that part in the beginning, um, then I'd be willing to, you know, go about this in a different direction. But I, I believe you guys made contact, you know, as much as you could, trying to help them. Um, at some point, people need to help themselves. You know, I struggle with that. That if somebody's reaching out to you to try to help you make a payment plan, but you're not willing to answer the phone or return the phone call, um, I, I struggle with that piece.
And I think it's difficult to respond if you have no choice on how to approach even a payment plan. Uh, I mean, even for instance, uh, people who own bars were completely locked down until about June 15th. How are they supposed to pick up the phone and make a payment plan when they don't know what the restrictions will look like a month from now? And I, 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 I'm, I'm not looking to forgive. I'm looking to just extend uh and still hold people accountable and responsible for the bills that they do owe. Uh, but at this moment in time, I feel because we took part in the restrictions, that we should also take part in offering some kind of respite rather than just automatically following the same rules and regulations that we've been following for the past decades and, and years.
I would, I would appreciate, um, you know, uh, Scott, I hate to put it right back on you, but uh, you know, what are your thoughts uh on something like this? We haven't done this before and I understand COVID, that's why we're having the conversation. Uh, we do want to help where we can. But I guess the effect on your department uh and also the follow-up on your department because it would be more work. If we defer and we look at other uh avenues, it's going to be more work or something different than we've done in the past. So um, just I'd like to hear your response and then obviously I'll give you my response.
Certainly, thank you. You know, I have concerns, uh, you know, about revenue from an operating standpoint, but if, as Chair Sabatier indicated, we work with uh administration and we're able to uh find a way which makes the department whole and keeps us able to function, um, I'm agreeable to deferring this. I think a, a year is possibly too long and, and we can do the tax roll at any point in time. We typically do it at the end of the fiscal year, but if we wanted to give this six months, um, you know, we could do it again in six months. As Supervisor Scott pointed out, we do, you know, extensive outreach. Um, usually by the time we get to the point to, you know, people are being placed on the tax roll for delinquency, uh, those are people who typically aren't interested in working with us, unfortunately. You know, the good note about this going to tax roll, it's not a credit and collection, so it's not going to negatively impact their credit. Um, it does only affect property owners. Uh, for renters on the water side, if we have significant delinquencies there, uh, we do typically use a collection agency for that because we can't attach it to the property. If they're a renter, the, the property owner is not responsible. But um, I would be agreeable certainly to uh looking at working with our customers more. I'm not sure that we're going to get significant um, you know, compliance in that additional six months or even additional 12 months. Uh, I think by the time we've made it to this point, uh, the people who are going to work with us have already reached out and are going to work with us and those who aren't uh are going to get another six or 12 months respite and then it'll roll at a larger amount at that point in time. But those are my thoughts and concerns about it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And Supervisor Sabatier, I do, uh, I do understand exactly where you're coming from. I do like the opportunity to uh potentially defer this to have some further discussions. But ultimately, I think Supervisor Scott is right, you know, um, what is our current policy right now for sewer and water hookups? Don't matter, we're not disconnecting anybody at this point, are we? Or?
Correct. No. Uh, Executive Order 42-20 enacted by Governor Newsom last March uh was put into place and prevents us from disconnecting water connections for non-payment. Um, if there's health and safety reasons, if they have a, a back hook preventer which fails or something like that, we can still disconnect. Uh, but for non-payment, we are under a moratorium. Uh, that has not lifted until September 30th of this year. And then at that point in time, uh, we will be able to pursue disconnection as a way of bringing compliance with latent delinquent bills. Uh, sewer, we typically do not disconnect. So sewer, if they are delinquent, it typically just rolls. And we actually have some customers who regularly do not pay their bill. They just let it roll to the tax roll every year and they pay at one time um in that fashion.
Great. I appreciate that. And, and maybe that's where we could start with the deferment of uh, you know, tying it to uh the moratorium that is put in place by the state. That should give us time to at least have conversations, both with the ERP committee and, you know, Carol. So I, I would be in favor of, of deferring at this point also.
And I appreciate you mentioning. And I appreciate you mentioning six months because I agree, a year, a year is a long time where we're back to what we would be doing on a regular basis right now. And so to extend it all the way for another calendar year or fiscal year, that seems too long as well. So I agree that we, let's hope we can bring the conversation back on how we can keep you whole and how we can move forward, or if we need to move forward with what's presented to us today. But that's what I would like to see. And it looks like there's three of us right now, but I'd like to hear from Supervisor Pyska.
I'm willing to talk about a deferment. I do agree with Supervisor Scott and Simon about, you know, eventually these bills do have to be paid. We can look at extending the disconnection if we have to, but let's, let's see what the impact is.
And, and not to belabor a point, but we're saying they're not working with us. We weren't necessarily working with the businesses that had restrictions. It was a very hard line of what could and could not happen. Yes, there was some opportunities for grants. Yes, there were some opportunities, but if they had bills stacking up, we didn't allow them to open up more to be able to afford the utilities and everything else as well. So I think that we're still feeling unfortunately a bit of the sting of the COVID-19 restrictions. So I would love to hear more about what's possible for the deferment and what we can do to keep you whole as well. And so I guess the consensus for B, C, and D is to have a conversation between special districts and administration and to come back to the board with what are the options?
Are these commercial properties or residential properties?
Both. And to give some additional context, on the sewer side, water side's pretty easy. Water, you have a base charge and then usage. On the sewer side, it's more complicated. It's based on use of the facility. So for some of our commercial customers, restaurants were, you know, an example of those that were impacted. Typically, there's a base charge for the restaurant and then there's typically a per-seat charge. So we issued credits. We reduced the bill by the per-seat charge, recognizing that they're closed. So, you know, we reduced bills and worked with commercial customers in those fashions. Schools was another example. It's usually a per-student charge on top of the base charge. So our bills went down in, you know, in response to COVID and in response to their reduced ability to serve, but still we are seeing some delinquencies.
And the reason I bring up commercials is because that's where people would be employed and it impacts the employment opportunities, which impacts the, the income of our constituents. So the consensus I asked for, oh, sorry Supervisor.
Just have a question. I'm almost thinking that because there was no consequences of not paying your water bill, we didn't turn off our water. If that's maybe why we didn't see an increased amount of people wanting to pay their bills? What is the percentage that you saw in the past of turning their water off and then having them come in and pay their bill?
Usually pretty good. Shutting people's water off usually gets their attention.
So I'm almost thinking that because there was no consequences of not paying their bill.
Yeah.
Then there wasn't really motivation to go forward and try to find ways to pay that. I, I'm struggling with this a little.
Yeah. And we've seen, for example, in Spring Valley, CSA two, last year we saw 2,800 roughly in delinquencies. This year, we're seeing 43,000 in delinquencies. So there's, there's an understanding that they're not paying their bill because we can't shut them off. And out in Spring Valley, honestly, we see a lot of abuse. We're always chasing cannabis as an illegal use. And so we've seen situations where we suspect that's going on and the bills aren't being paid because they're aware they can't be shut off for non-payment.
Yeah, that's another conversation.
Yeah.
I would, although.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to add more than just, I agree. I apologize for that. You know, this gives enough time for people that are waiting for their EDD, you know, payments, things like that. I know there's a big backup in situations like that. People had to actually prioritize, and not speaking significantly about Spring Valley because I understand that problem. But in other areas, you know, having to prioritize which bills they pay, most of the time they're only going to go for the bills that are most important for their family as just to survive. So I understand that. And so I think six months is plenty of time. And after that, I think we can go forward from there, so.
We have never done this, so I would like to hear from county council. You know, this is something we haven't talked about. We haven't been through a pandemic either. So I would just like to hear, you know, where we stand as a board in doing something like this since it hasn't been done, that I know of, at least since I've been on the board.
Thank you. What you're doing today here with these resolutions is you're agreeing that these, these fees and delinquencies exist. And then you're also directing that the amounts of those delinquencies be placed on the 2021, 2022 tax rolls. But you're also hearing that water is different from sewer, that you don't yet know whether and how there'll be some kind of financial backfill for special districts to continue to serve their, their rate payers. So it's a little unclear what you intend with your consensus to do today. You're approving these resolutions, which are going to effectuate the placement of these delinquencies on the tax rule for each and every one of these. If you're going to defer collection, I'm not sure what you mean unless you're going to adjust these resolutions to take them off the tax rule, which might be a little bit premature, given the lack of information you have as to backfill and the differences in situation and the level of effort that's been expended by special districts with regard to sewer and/or water. Also, you don't, at this point, no cost to defer. So when you're saying six months, I think your board's going to have to determine exactly what you're deferring and specifically ask special districts from an operational on the ground, what is that going to mean? The resolutions say this is going to be placed on the tax rule. If you're going to defer placement on the tax rule, then what exactly would that period of time be? Would they come back with all of these resolutions and just continue the public hearings for six months? Or would you take a partial action now and then catch up later? Again, there's a number of unknowns here. And when you're deferring payment of something, it's always a good idea to know the circumstances that justify the deferral, which may be different in each of these cases from what special district's administrator is saying. And then the amount of that and whether and how you can effectuate that backfill.
So I just want to make some clarifications on, on what I proposed. It wouldn't be a deferment of payments. It would be a deferment of placing these into a collection agency or on the tax rule, which we can do annually, we can do every six months, because as you said, 60 days, no payment, you're delinquent. Every 60 days, you could come to the board and we can place the delinquent properties onto a tax rule if that was our policy of doing it that way. But we wait till the end of the fiscal year to do these things. This would just defer the decision of placing these into a collection or into the tax rule for six months due to the fact that there are still some residual impacts from COVID-19 and economic impacts to the people who in the past may have been able to afford this, but currently have not been back to full capacity to be able to do so. So it wouldn't be a deferment of payment for the water bills. The water bills would still continue to be submitted out and obviously increase the balance of what is due for those specific properties. I just know that one of the issues that we're struggling to tackle here is tax defaulted properties. And if you can't afford your water bill, I'm concerned that if we take action too quickly, that that might also eventually increase our number of tax defaulted properties, which then becomes a larger issue than just having a delinquent water bill. Not looking to take away the responsibility of having a water bill or sewer bill, just looking to defer our action of going further in a more hard-line approach on collecting those fees.
And I think, Mr. Chair, my, my question goes to each and every resolution authorizes placing them on the 2021, 2022 tax rule. You may want to inquire, what's the deadline for that? In other words, how does your deferment coordinate with the, the deadline by which special districts would have to place them on the tax rule? Because that's the only collection method that's specified in the resolutions.
Correct. And that is an August 6 deadline. We work with the auditor and the tax collector's office on that. So I'm not certain, you know, a deferment would obviously have an impact. We would then have to work with those departments. And I'm not certain what that coordination would require six months down the road.
And if it's August 6, I would hope that that's enough time to be able to have those discussions to say it's possible to wait till December, it's possible to wait and that it could occur. Or if it can't, at least we can come back before August 6 and make a, bring back this exact same public hearing and rediscuss the actions taken.
The tax rule takes a little bit of time to complete, so it'd have to be soon.
That tax bill goes out and is received the beginning of December.
Right.
So that is six months from now.
But I.
But the collection part of that could be deferred until that tax bill rolls out, which is six, five months from now. Otherwise, we have to wait another full year to have it on the tax rule, bills that go out.
We could, we could do this process, at least from our department's perspective, to have those items, those delinquencies placed on the tax rule. The tax rule is just going to go out in December and April regardless. But once they're placed on that tax rule, then we see those revenues. That's when we recognize those revenues. So even if we place it on the tax rule now, we don't start to see those revenues until those two tax payments come in.
Right. So that is a significant amount of time from now.
And, and I'm still willing to take that time. And I don't think that you have a deadline and that's it, we can't do this. It's the deadline to get it on the tax rule for the next tax bill that's going to be coming out is August 6. Once we pass that, it's not like we can never put these delinquent.
Correct. It just shows up on the next bill.
It just will have to take more time in order to get, get us there. And like I said, I'm, I'm willing to look at that and hopefully before August 6, you can have the conversations with administration. And I'm guessing as well as our auditor controller to make sure that that's going to be possible. What, what does that look like? And so hopefully that gives you enough time to be able to have those conversations. And I still would like to move forward with the.
Well, I, I mean, we could have a conversation in the next couple of weeks and make that decision. It's problematic to allow people to get that far behind though. You know, that's one of my concerns.
I have a question on that. So let's say that we go ahead and do not accept these resolutions today and the moratorium is lifted in September, but they're still showing on your records that they're delinquent.
Correct.
Would their water still be turned off in September if we don't come up with another way to make the payments? This is what we're trying to avoid is their water being turned off.
Yeah. If they don't reach out to us and coordinate some sort of payment plan and we'll, you know, we reach out to them. Before we do shut offs, there's, there's multiple forms of communication with our customers to encourage them to work with us to set up a payment plan. A shut off is, is really our last resort.
So regardless of what we do here today, that still could occur in the end of September.
That still could occur at the end of September.
So maybe we need to go ahead and accept these resolutions and in that time, trying to figure out how we can find the money to help these customers to pay these bills so their water does not get shut off in September. Because that's the ultimate result that we're trying to avoid and it's going to happen regardless if we accept these resolutions or not.
We're going to find the money to pay their bills?
Well, Bruno was talking about finding.
There's programs out there.
There's programs.
And we've, we've, we've shared some of that information on social media. There's, it's not available to us, but as a, as a private person, it's available to them. We've encouraged them, if they're struggling paying their utility bills or their rent, reach out to these programs, so.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. You know, I know, good intention. I, I think, you know, with the information from here from Scott and with Anita to, we want to find a way to help. I know that's exactly what your, your intentions are. But maybe not deferring these, these resolutions or the actions on it today are the way to go. Maybe changing my stance on that, that we move forward with approving the resolutions, but then look at an opportunity with some of potentially the ARP funds, just as we did with the CARES Act funds, where we reached out and came up with the program that we did for the businesses, the $20,000, you know, grants that we put together to help pay with those. Maybe there's an opportunity that we, that the committee at least consider some of those opportunities to help, as Tina said, Supervisor Scott said, because really the intention is to help people with these bills and not be shut off. So good intentions, I think, but I, I'm going to change my, my stance on it and think that we should move forward with it and then look at working with the ARP committee and coming up with maybe some other solutions, including the current grants that are out there or opportunities to help folks move forward with this. So I'm officially changing my stance, Bruno. Sorry, man.
No, no worries.
So go forward.
And on that note, kind of on, off subject, I think we need to be looking at other utilities too, that we need to be looking at to help people because it's not just water and sewer. It's going to be PG&E, it's going to be other utilities that are going to be shut off when that moratorium is lifted.
Yeah. And for point of note, CPUC extended PG&E's moratorium until the end of September as well. It was in the middle of June, but they pushed that out to the end of September as well. One other item, as always, when this comes up annually, we continue to work with customers. So even if these resolutions are adopted until the actual moment where we send that final information over to the auditor and tax collector, we continue to work with customers, set up payment plans, allow them to pay off balances, whatever we can do to avoid that last ditch effort.
Okay. Any further comments? Let's go ahead and open this up to the public. We have, did, did you want to give more information on C and D? I know I kind of interrupted on B.
No, I think C and D are similar in nature to B. C, if I'm not mistaken, is the Kelseyville Waterworks Districts three. It's its own legal entity. So you, as this board of directors, are sitting as four legal bodies today. So C is for Kelseyville Waterworks District number three. And then D is for Lake County Sanitation District, which is all the areas that we serve for sewer only. So, but I think we probably have to consider the resolutions and do the public hearing one at a time for each of those four.
I just wanted to, I kind of hijacked the conversation and put them all in one lump sum, but I know you only presented B. If there's no further comments from the board, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone have a comment or question on item 6.4? And in the Zoom room. Oh, I didn't see you. I'm so sorry, sir. If you could please step up to the podium. And in the Zoom room, please raise your hand and you will be called on once we go ahead and finish in the boardroom.
My name is Darnell Walton, I live in Surin. Life is complicated for all of us and we're trying to do the best we can for all of us. And today, this problem has been magnified by about 10,000-fold from my letter. I received from, I guess this would be D, on my sewer stating that I was in arrears. I called the office. The office told me my payment was two days late. I said, how can that be? I have auto pay. Well, I was told this letter is sent out to everybody every year. This is the first one I've gotten. I'm trying to understand and work with the system that we have and to hopefully improve it. This is an upsetting situation for me personally. I pay my bills. I have an auto pay. I double-checked with the third-party auto pay. I have authorized them to pay whatever the district bills them. This was a mistake when the program was first started in which I had to authorize the third party each year due to the increase, automatic increase each year, as I understood. That's been resolved. Now to spend the time and effort, which none of us have the luxury of, this is a waste. There is a glitch that fell through. I have friends who receive these letters, who pay their bills, who can pay them and do pay them. So my question today is, how do I help you help me? How do I help you help all of us here? By looking at the obviouses, the simples. You brought up just incredible complicated things that go back to and ultimately to def, you know, properties that have defaulted, which is one of the biggest problems this county faces economically as well as socially. It's hard to support organized. It's hard to support organized, voted into, elected systems that have put our faith and trust in, as well as our money, when it appears all too often that the common sense, which is never common and seldom sensible, is overlooked. So whether I have an answer today, or will I get this bill, this kind of a statement again, with an auto pay? It's, it's, it's odd that I think I can pay other bills in this county, I could be wrong and please correct me, with a credit card, but I have never historically been able to do that with the sewer district. I could pay cash, I could walk in, I could pay in advance, I could pay monthly. So finally, we got a system here that I have to pay each transaction above and beyond my bill. I'm willing to do that for the convenience of not having to be in town to pay my bills, so I'm not in arrears. I'm doing my due diligence, I'm trying to work with the system. Please help us all understand how it works, and I will close with one final thing. I've had a presence here since 1950, one way or another. I hear it today, I hear it every day, of all those past days, about Lake County giving it over and over and over to people who have proven themselves not to be responsible, more and more leeway, to the detriment of the overall county, its welfare, and those participants in this county who are willing, not just able, but willing-
Three minutes.
-to play along. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure that if you reach out to special district or your district supervisor, that they can review that letter and, and see if there's anything that can be done about it. I don't know the specifics, I don't think any of us have any of the specifics to be able to discuss it intelligently right now, but I would say please reach out, and I'm sure that they, they are willing to sit down with you and see, either make you understand why you received the letter, or correct any errors, if there was any errors.
I'm sorry, I've done that twice, and now I have a zero all of a sudden, I've cleared up. That's not an answer, that's not working with me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any further-
I could respond briefly. You asked how you could help, help us, and, and your feedback, along with others, has done that. The timing of the letter, the, the timing of when the letter went out and when things were delinquent, caused some chaos this year, this cycle. We've adjusted things, our bills are due upon receipt, however, the language isn't clear in that. So to get to 60 days delinquent, there was some overlap due to the billing cutoffs and the deadlines for tax roll stuff. So that caused customers who are not normally delinquent to appear to be delinquent to the system, and so they received letters. We've taken steps to modify that process so that doesn't happen again in the future, so.
Thank you for that. Any further questions from the boardroom? And again, I said it, the Zoom room, please raise your hand if you have a comment, and I see none, so let's bring it back to the board and see what actions we take.
We're on B, I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Nay.
Thank you.
And moving on to item C?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Nay.
Super, sorry, I'm trying to take notes. Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Nay. And then item D?
I will offer the resolution.
And resolution's been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Nay.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that concludes that item.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So it is 10:55 a.m., we are almost on time, just an hour and 15 minutes late for our next item, but we will take a 10-minute break, and we will come back together at 11:05, so quick recess. All right, everyone, welcome back. Let's go ahead and start our 6.5 item from 9:40 a.m. A, Presentation on County Facilities Energy Conservation Measures Program, and B, Consideration of Agreement for a Preliminary Energy Audit. Director Ewing.
Good morning, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. As a, as the slides are being put up here, I'll just give you a brief intro. First off, I'm joined with, by Michael Day with Train. He will be taking the bulk of the presentation, but what I'll, what I'll do is just kinda set some of the background. The board, I think most of the board is aware that last year, through the Public Services Department, we put out a request for qualifications for an energy services company. The, the scope of what we were reaching out for is a company that, that could not only guide the county through assessing county facilities with, with energy conservation measures, but ultimately, the approach is to actually produce those energy savings. It's kind of a design-build approach. Through that RFQ, we received five respondents. Train was, was selected as the, the most qualified firm that, that responded through a, a selection panel, and so we're, what we're doing now is presenting essentially, it's, it's kinda like a scope of work. Train has, has done some investigation on, on what the county facilities have, what they don't have, and it really does extend beyond just, let's change out the lights to LED, or, or let's, you know, get some, some better HVAC. That's what we've continually used as low-hanging fruit, and, and some entities have done that and, and others haven't, and I'll, I'll let Michael go into that a little bit later. But it extends beyond, beyond that a little bit. In fact, what you'll see on the slide there is, is the selection committee did rank Train as best qualified, and, and a lot of the driving factors for that is, is that second bullet there, advanced energy options, that there was a recognition by Train in, in their response to the RFQ, that, that, that fourth bullet, county facility staff efforts to date, likely took out a lot of the, the low-hanging fruit. And, and again, Michael will comment to that, but, but it does extend beyond just the lights and the HVAC, essentially, and solar, you know, I need to not just jump past that. We need to look for ways that, that, that we might be able to reduce our reliance, kinda different, different power generation options, so that's, that's a lot of what will be considered. What Train has, has done up to this point is, they're, they're about to start, if, if the board is supportive, on a preliminary audit, what is called a preliminary energy audit. That, that, after that, would, would come an investment-grade audit, and then ultimately the project development. When we say project development, that is, on a, on a big picture, what is the energy savings project? So it would, it would include all the different buildings that, that we, we might be pursuing different projects at, but all one, all-encompassing project. So if we could go to the next slide, it's really the transition over to, to Train, and he'll, he'll present to you in, in a succinct fashion as we can get to, because I know we're on a, on a, on a timeframe, and, and I know Michael Day, so. So, so I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thanks, Lars. Let's see here, am I on?
You should be on.
All right. Hi, I am Michael Day, I'm with Train, on the phone, calling in. We have Reggie Ingram as well, and Greg Lisk from our team. So the things that we wanted to do were some basic introductions as to who we are. We wanted to go over the guiding principles for this project as we saw it. We wanted to give you sort of an, an interim assessment on the traditional energy projects, and there's a breakpoint there, and talk about what we'd wanna start looking at for advanced energy projects. And to be honest, we have not started on that yet, and we can't really start until you officially select us, and then talk about the, the path forward and what we see. Okay, next slide. So the guiding principles, as we understand it and working with staff, is that we want this project to be self-funding, so this would be no capital coming from the county for whatever kinds of upgrades or projects that we're looking for. We wanna try and keep as much of the work local as possible. If there's something going on, let's use local contractors, let's use local labor to do it, that has economic impacts beyond just what the project does. Obviously, science and reality-based, and we're trying to, where possible, accomplish multiple goals at once. Supervisor Simon, you know, we've been working for a while with Hidden Valley Lake to try and do a combination fire flow, energy storage, microgrid, keep the lights on, and PSS-type of a, a project there. Where it's possible to do multiple things at once, that's a, that's a good goal to have. What we did was, we started up until now, looking at numerous county sites, and this is where we were able to use publicly available information up until now. So again, this is sort of the breakpoint between the publicly available information and where we start doing something that's a little bit more detailed in our preliminary review. We looked at a whole bunch of county-owned occupied buildings, water, wastewater, lighting districts, landfill, and in looking at that, that gave us sort of a, an idea baseline of where things were on the, what you might call the traditional measures. Okay?
And I, I think it's a good opportunity to just jump in. You mentioned water and wastewater, it was not just Public Services working on this with, with, with Train. Administrative Office was involved, special districts, obviously, with, with their facilities because they are a heavy hitter, and, and then other entities that, that manage their own facilities, but, but they were typically buildings, so, and grounds for that matter, but we'd be talking about Public Works Sheriff, so I just wanted to make sure that we, we made mention of that, that it was, that it was not just operating in a silo.
Okay, next slide. So traditional energy measures are the things that you'd normally think of for an energy services contract, lights, air conditioning, windows, roofing, those types of measures. Usually what we're able to do is to go in and, and look at something, and we find some low-hanging fruit, like going from fluorescent lights to LEDs, that have a very fast payback. So the money invested gives a lot of revenue flow, and that revenue flow pulls through some of the items that may have a higher capital cost that need to be paid. So typically, lighting pays for HVAC, and, and HVAC may partially pay for roofing. That's the normal way of things. So we looked at 74 buildings totaling 520,000 square feet, 3.1 million in annual energy spend. We developed a rank order with staff of 19 buildings, so we cut that down to 285,000 and 250, or 2.56 million in annual energy spend. And when we looked at it, what we saw was that your staff, and particularly Bob, from what I understand, has really been forward-thinking on this. They've been taking advantage through stuff that was self-performed, through money that was available, to get ahead of the curve. So replacing the lights without needing an external contractor to make it happen, getting the thermostat set right, just doing all those things to really lower it, and they're, like a lot of things in life, that's a double-edged sword for, you know, we look at a lot of counties, and you guys are at the top in terms of just not leaving a lot of thing, a lot of low-hanging fruit to deal with, and it really is a compliment to, to Bob and the rest of the Public Works staff, that there was, if we were just looking at traditional measures, we'd be coming back to say, "Sorry, there's no project here," just to put it completely bluntly, because you've been so good at attacking the items that use a lot of energy.
And I appreciate them saying that, and it's an opportunity to footstomp that with Public Services, with, with Bob, with his staff, and, and I knew that when I stepped in five or six years ago, that, that they were out in front. He's, he's using, he, he's being very innovative, I mean, he works behind the scenes, and, and he, he's, he's constantly looking at, at ways that we can, we can do, do our job better and, and save the county money. So, so Bob, just thank you to, to you and your guys.
Another part of that is renewable plus storage, which is photovoltaic, typically photovoltaic plus batteries, including some incentive programs that are out there called the Self-Generation Incentive Program, or SJEB. It's tough to make a lot of that stuff work, and if we could go to the next slide, please? So this is a map of the, obviously, of your area. These were the top areas that we were, that we were looking at. The large circles there, the size of the circle represents how much of an energy spend there is, and this was part of the visualizations that helped us hone in on the, again, for traditional measures, where there might be some opportunities. Next slide, please? This, I think, is a really illustrative type of, type of slide, and there's been a lot of talk about solar photovoltaic. Hey, it's great, it's free energy, you put the, you put it on there and the sun lowers your bill. What you see on the, on the figure up there on the left-hand side, where it looks sort of like a loaf, that's a, an annual projection of the output of a solar photovoltaic. So it would be every day of the year on one axis, and then as it goes from left to right, that's the amount of production you get out of it every day. So what you see just to the right of the, of the top of the loaf is a blue or purple box, I, I apologize, I'm colorblind, and that is where, what peak used to be in PG&E. So those were the most expensive hours out of the year, and you can see that a lot of the loaf is captured in that blue box. So when you were making electricity, a lot of it was being made when those hours are really the most valuable. But since earlier this year, it moved over to the right, to that goldish-green box. So peak now, instead of running from noon to 6, runs from 4 to 9, and as you look out there, you see that there isn't a whole lot of solar production when it's most valuable. As a matter of fact, for three hours, for three months out of the year, super off-peak, meaning a price of around 6 cents a kilowatt hour, is from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. in PG&E. So the lowest value time out of the year for your production is actually when you make the most solar photovoltaic. And so this is the great shift that's been happening, and it doesn't mean that solar photovoltaics have no place, it means that they largely need to be paired with some sort of storage from an economic standpoint to wheel that production from when it's made to when it's valuable, if the project's willing to pay for itself. This is an important point, so are there any questions on, on this part, about how the time shift of peak to later in the day doesn't really line up with solar anymore? Okay, next slide. So the interim assessment on, on solar photovoltaic is that there's the technical capability to install substantial solar photovoltaic at county facilities, but that electricity use by the county is on a time-of-use basis. It's not flat, it's not the same time every, there are times of the day when electricity is valuable, and there are times when it's much less valuable than average. You don't pay an average bill, you pay it on a time-of-use basis. And that the problem is, is that, is that there is a misalignment between when solar makes the electricity and when the high billing periods are, and that you may take on projects for other reasons, such as resilience, or carbon goals, or something else like that, but without having energy storage, it's very challenging to make those projects be economically viable, even more so when you're dealing with building stock that's already had a tremendous amount of its low-hanging fruit, energy efficiency measures, take, basically taken off the table. Next slide, please? So again, the, the, just sort of the high-level view that we did from publicly available information is that the- is that the, a lot of the low-hanging fruit has been captured. There are some upgrades that will need to happen, no matter how well you maintain it, no matter how far in front of things you are. Equipment ages, and when it ages, it eventually needs to be replaced. And that's not to say that there aren't needs from public facilities, but it's going to be very difficult for a traditional measure to really just fund it by itself. However, we believe that there are some, what we call advanced energy opportunities, and that those may be able to provide revenue to make some of the traditional needs move forward when they wouldn't otherwise be able to pay for themselves. Next slide. So advanced energy projects. Next slide, please. So if you look at the larger-scale energy projects, similar to what we've been working on for the last year and change at Hidden Valley Lake, there are some market changes that have happened that affect these. So the biggest one is that the California I S O and PG&E interconnection process has basically exploded. CISO has already said that the, that the interconnection applications that came in in April of this year are going to be, aren't going to be processed for probably five years. And they've closed the window for new interconnection applications for 2022. It won't open again until 2023, and then you're looking at, again, five to six years of, of processing there. So it is a really tough situation. You also see with PG&E, they're having significant transmission issues at the Vacadixon substation. You're not that, you're not that close to Vacadixon, that's the big one. If you're driving down 80 between San Francisco and Sacramento, you pass this absolutely massive substation. It's so big, it actually has its own page on Wikipedia. Well, when that one has problems, it causes problems for everything in the area. And what that means is that without transmission, you can't get what are called capacity payments until you get that full deliverability out of CISO. And that means that projects need to change. They can't be reliant simply on merchant or grid revenue. They're going to, in many cases, be reliant on at least partially being funded by grants. The good news is, there are a lot of grants that are coming available to communities, to, to communities that are in high-fire-threat districts, to communities that have been hit with public safety power shut-offs, a lot of things, particularly for critical facilities. And we think that we can put something together there, and we want to get started with looking at that for you, focused on critical facilities and focus, you know, dealing with the, with the market as it is right now, and to put Lake County in a position to go after getting your fair share, and maybe more, of the grants that are available as they become, as those grant funding opportunities start opening up later this year. Next slide, please.
If we can get rid of that dialogue box in the front? Maybe just hit okay.
Is it this mouse?
No, I think it's this mouse down here.
Right there?
Oh.
Yeah, hit okay there.
Sorry about that.
Perfect.
Is it Michael's link?
Uh, next slide.
I think we can deal with it. Thank you, Michael.
Yeah. Sorry, didn't know that was me. Next slide.
I think that is.
Oh, that is Leslie. So the path forward here is that we're seeking the board, basically, to validate the selection of us by staff. We're honored and pleased to be selected. We want to start looking for projects for you and doing some preliminary analysis, and come back to this board with an offer. My guess would be six to eight weeks. And we'll be putting some pretty substantial engineering resources behind that, so we can come back with a, with an offer to go into a detailed design phase in order to catch some of those grant opportunities that we know are going to be coming out later this year. And we think that there are some great opportunities, but for us to get started on that, we need to be officially selected.
Yep. And that's, that's the opportunity where we, I think it's a good chance to talk about the A and the B. The A and the B of this item. A was the update, and B is a consideration of an agreement for, for Train to move ahead with a preliminary energy audit. It is a no-cost agreement to perform that preliminary energy audit. Once that is completed, the, the next phase would, would be an investment-grade audit, which, which may or may not come with, you know, depending on what the preliminary energy audit finds. It, it may be a make-or-break point. Well, it will be a make-or-break point, so go or no-go is probably a better way to put it. So at this point, it's a, it's a no-cost agreement, and we would be coming back to the board with a presentation of those findings.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions? Sam? You have the light switch.
We can hear.
So I'm going to suggest that that's enough on our agenda. It's either in the chambers or Zoom. If we don't have Granicus working, we'll go ahead and get the video up there once everything is done. We are still recording, so we'll have all the video to be able to post at a later time, but nobody has missed anything. We are still on item 6.5. We took a pause during the technical difficulties, and let's go ahead and get back to it. Any questions or comments, or did you, let's go ahead and go back to Michael. You said you wanted to talk to us real quick about the process.
Sure. So the process is, is that we're getting started with this. This is, as was mentioned, no cost for us to do the preliminary analysis. We're going to look for advanced energy opportunities. We're also going to see what that would mean financially, and how that could start helping along some of the traditionals that couldn't work without it. If we find something, or if we don't find something, we're going to come back at the end of this preliminary review and give you a report. At that point, we would want to start moving into detailed design and an investment-grade audit for the different elements. At that point, there does start to be an obligation. So when we move into Phase Two, that's when we really start getting into the engineering costs and hard costs. For an advanced energy project, that could easily be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. At the end of that, when we end, or correction, when we enter into Phase Two, we're going to tell you what we think that opportunity looks like, about what we think it'll cost, about what we think the, the economic benefit to the county is. And you have the choice to say, yes, we want to move into Phase Two or not. If we move into Phase Two, at the end of that, there are really three different options the way it can work out. Number one is, if Train has totally misjudged things during the preliminary, and we move into it, and we find out that we're just way off, there's no obligation for the county to move on. So if we think that a project is going to cost $20 million, and it turns out that it costs $60 million because there's a tiger salamander habitat, or something like that that needs to be mitigated, if there's a problem there where it doesn't work the way that we thought it would at the beginning of Phase Two, that's on us, we eat the cost. If it turns out that things are pretty much like we thought, and the project works, and then we move into the final phase, which is contracting, in that case, everything's great, the costs of our development get rolled into the final contract. The one time that there is a commitment is, if we move into that future Phase Two, and we set out what we think a successful project will look like, and during Phase Two, we get there, and then the council decides to, or the Board of Supervisors decides to not move forward with the project for whatever reason, then there is a termination fee associated with Phase Two work, where if we bring you what we say we're going to, and you back out, then you're going to charge us for the, for the, for the engineering that's there in Phase Two. So there's no cost here, but there is a potential for a cost in that second phase, if you choose to move forward with it, and then you effectively voluntarily back out of the project at that time.
And I appreciate, if I could, I appreciate him, him bringing that up. That, that is to come. I want to make sure that that, that's clear. We're not to that point. We, we come back and, and we have that, that go-no-go decision at the completion of the preliminary audit.
Correct.
So thank you for that summary. And that process is tried and true throughout a lot of different counties and municipalities around California.
Right. Thank you very much for the clarification and the additional information. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Scott?
No question. Just want to thank Lars for bringing this forward. I know this is something that we have been talking about since I've been on the board over four years, not only looking at the economic benefits for the county, but making sure that we're doing the right thing for our environment. So I'm definitely in favor of moving forward, and exciting to see what comes out of this.
So, Supervisor Simon?
I'm in the same way. I'm glad that we're having the conversation today. You know, we have all spoken about this, but I know numerous times we look at it. And I hope when we're doing the audits, we're looking at, I know we said some of the term, I think, was the, the long-term innovation that's coming with this. So I know in the past, you talked about the potential opportunity of the water that we do move in the county through the pipes, you know, through the sewer, you know, is there an opportunity to generate, you know, electricity there? Looking at, you know, the, the solar opportunity with the battery backup storage, I think, is very encouraging, understand that, want to see some of those projects happen here. But also looking at the innovative opportunities that, like I said, we may not even know that are out there right now. I think, long-term-wise, here in the state of California, they're looking to go by 2035 or 2040 to a lot of electric vehicles, and looking at those opportunities for fueling stations that will look different than they do right now, opportunities to make money down the road for producing solar that could charge electric vehicles, and other things in our, in our, in our own vehicle fleets, and looking at all those opportunities as we move forward. I think it's very unique, but very happy to be having this conversation, both from the climate change opportunities, but really looking at how to innovate what we have here, our natural resources, which we were just talking. We are not enjoying the heat that is coming through right now, but there is plenty of sun, and the battery technology coming along with it, where we can store it, reuse it, and the artificial intelligence to know when to do that is really coming along. So I'm excited about the opportunities, because we're always looking away of creating economies, jobs, and this may be one of those opportunities that we really take advantage of. Being rural is sometimes a challenge for us, but I think this is really going to work in our favor if we do the right thing. So Lars, thank you very much for bringing this. And I know, Michael, we had met, I think, three years ago in Sacramento with C A O, you know, and Lars was already, you know, having those conversations, so happy to be here today. So go ahead, Lars.
Just, just as a follow-up to that, that I think is important to note, I mentioned earlier, the public services, the, the facilities-centric focus on this, not, not that there was one, but that, that's how it initiated, was, was what can we do for our buildings? Obviously, it's, it expands beyond that. The use of energy expands far beyond that. That's, that was demonstrated during the slide, that the map and the bubbles, a lot of the, the bigger colored ones were, were not facilities, not, not, you know, your traditional facilities, buildings. They were, they were other infrastructure, water, wastewater infrastructure. And so it's, it's going to be important that, that a lot of other departments participate in, in this, or at least have, work in parallel paths into that. And they have, a lot of them, special districts particularly, has, has been out in front with a lot of, with a lot of different methods, particularly solar, that they have implemented, because their pumps and motors are on a, on a continual basis. They're not like a, a building that has, you know, a, a set time where it, where it has that need. But I think the point is that ensuring that we, that we do include, collaborate with those other departments that have, that are heavier hitters. So I will reach out to them, but we just want to ensure that, that we have the, you know, the, the board, support from the board to, to include them with this.
I just wanted to think, just to add on to that, Lars, absolutely. Not only all the other county departments and everything that's using the energy, as you're saying, but also too, with our just communities. You know, we're always resilient, we talked about that after the fires, but engaging the community and starting this here at the county level is really important, because over the next decade, that's going to be how we survive and who we, you know, really get our name out there, that we're not only resilient through disasters, but we're resilient for the community and the climate, and from the business aspect, from different, different community members and business owners. So I think it's unique, you know, not only unique to Lake County, but I think we can be a leader in this industry. So I'm, I'm excited about the conversations we're going to have, because projects are like what we do. And I, I appreciate sitting on the board and all the paperwork we get, but it's great to have projects and to see those come to fruition. And we know that this is something that our community is interested in. We've all heard that, and, you know, I just, I'm excited to have the conversation.
So just a full disclosure, I've met with Michael Day multiple times. He was a presenter over at R C R C, I think Supervisor Crandall met him before I did. And right away, I needed to ask a lot of questions, and I've learned quite a lot from Mr. Day. I have every belief that Train is the innovative solution that we are looking for, that they will find ways to help not just us as a county, but our communities as well. And, and that's what I'm hoping that we can look at, not just our facilities, but also what can we do to provide assistance to our communities, because we are at the whim of PG&E. In the late 90s or mid 90s, we already had rolling blackouts, they seemed to disappear, and we almost forgot about them until they just came back, starting last year. We're back, and it's going to happen again, and again, and again, until we figure out how to be a lot more self-sustainable. And I think that we have the capability to have some of those self-sustainability, maybe not being fully self-sustainable, but to increase our sustainability. And I'm hopeful that we can, the, the project that you've discussed with me, that you just brought up over in Hidden Valley, to me, is the type of project that I would like to discuss further on, how can we duplicate that kind of project throughout the county, where it creates fire suppression potential as well as energy? And I know, I believe that you were talking about the transmission interchange, mainly, I'm guessing that's the issue of creating things like peakers, where we can't necessarily connect directly to the grid to sell right away. But I think the idea of peakers, and I apologize for my phone buzzing, the, the idea of peakers, which is basically energy that has been, that is being held, whether it's in a battery or some other format, a, a big water tank, that you can turn on when that energy can be passed on to the consumer, that, to me, is what helps us with P S P S. That, to me, is what helps us during rolling blackouts, especially when we're dealing with it in the 100-degree, 100-degree weather that we've been enduring so far this past week. So I'm, I'm very excited that you're on board, very excited to approve this today, because I really think that we are going to see some innovative stuff, and I think that we are going to be in a much better place than where we are right now. Supervisor Simon?
Just had one follow-up too, and we're looking at this, because we're talking about solar and backup and everything, but I know there are programs out there too. I hope when we're doing the analysis, we're looking at, the PG&E opportunities are out there too, you know, and multiple meetings that we've had, even through PG&E, it's, you know, they used to have a program, and they brought it back. Now, from my understanding, is the BIP program, the E L R P program, where if you have your microgrid set up, you can get the meters set up through PG&E, and they'll pay you per kilowatt when you drop off on the high-intensity hours and other things. So I think there's not only putting the program together, but other programs we need to be looking at to, to maximize some of the funding, you know, or financial benefits, where we could run our generators, our solar system, battery backups, and there's actually money being, coming in per kilowatt saved during those, those high hours. So I know, I'm just throwing out some terms there, but I think PG&E's rolling some of those out. I'm hoping any business owners or anything should be looking into those opportunities too, because there, there are things, and we have a lot of opportunity from the county to make sure we're looking at those. So during that audit and other stuff, I hope we're looking at all those, looking at opportunities and programs we should be enrolling in, so we could utilize some of this stuff and start to actually get paid for using the systems we're going to be setting up. And it's not where we're selling it back to them, it's just saying, we got the equipment to run during the high-peak hours, so they'll reimburse you for some of that, whether it's just on the bill or direct payments. We just, I, I hope we're looking at all those as we're doing that, you know, just to subsidize. You know, I looked at there, I think it was the, the one sewer treatment plant was 900 and, almost a million dollars for the North West plant. You know, we cut that in half. What a huge savings and opportunity to move to different budget items, so just wanted to mention that.
Just to follow up on that, Supervisor Simon, part of what you're doing in selecting us today is giving us standing to talk to groups like the Community Microgrid Enablement Program at PG&E. This is a really great program from PG&E. We're working with them really in-depth at Hidden Valley Lake, and for Tooleme County, and for other customers, and they're letting us get into some of the really inside data that we wouldn't normally have access to at PG&E, to get to, to understanding. have access to at PG&E to get to understanding if and when projects can work. They are really good. But before we can start talking to them, we need to be selected as it. And they work as a clearinghouse to help us understand everything that we can do to get access to in terms of grants, in terms of market participation, whether it's at CISO or through PG&E or to another load serving entity like a CCA. That's what our, what a big part of our analysis, part of it's, you know, the mechanical engineering of how everything would fit together. Part of it's the economic analysis, part of it's financial. Those are all different elements. But PG&E has, I can say that the Community Microgrid Enablement Program and that staff has been the best set of people from a utility that I've ever worked with in the last 25 years that I've been doing this since I got out of the Navy. And they are, they are really good and they're really helping us not just see what's out there, but see what's out there and test it, stress test it fast. So because again, the grants that are going to probably be pretty important to making some of these things work, the grants aren't going to wait for us, right? We got to catch that train. And that's where really the CMEP and PG&E helping us iterate through some things and figure it out quickly is what's going to be needed to put this county in position to get its fair share of those dollars.
And since we're at the agreement stage, a point of emphasis in the RFQ was, was leading the initiative for, for programs SGP or others. So that, that was a huge factor in the selection process. And I'm saying that even though he was in the Navy and I was Air Force, so.
Any further, Supervisor Crandall?
Well, since you said that, the Army is going to join in. Well, you know, it's just good to see this come to fruition. We met with you in 2019. And I know it's something that's been kind of discussed previous to, my predecessor discussed it with me about the project in Hidden Valley, the SGP project, where you met with us and explained the DUC bill. And now, obviously, that's changed in a way. And so just seeing that and finally coming to fruition three years later, two years later. And Public Services, thank you for putting us in a position to, you know, be successful for this and move forward. Because like you said, their activity is what got us the opportunity to work with you. So good job.
All right. If there's no further comments, let's open it up for the public. Anyone in the boardroom have a comment on this item? Seeing none, if you're in the Zoom room, please press the icon at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or dial star nine if you're calling via telephone. And seeing none, let's bring it back to the board and take action on B.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consideration of agreement for a preliminary energy audit with TRAIN.
Second.
You have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, a second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Amber Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Looking forward to your work.
Thank you very much.
So we are at 11:55. We still have some timed items. We are going to postpone those until this afternoon. We have a hard line 1 o'clock for a closed session for item 8.1, I believe. Yes. And so I'd like to utilize the next five minutes to, let's go ahead and maybe do our calendars. And then we'll take a lunch, reconvene at 1:00 PM to do our 8.1 closed session. And I would suggest that we reconvene our open session at 4:00 to make sure we have enough time to at least go through our interview process, our post-conversation after the interviews. And if we still have time, we will continue our closed session items because there are other items as well. And so let's go ahead and do calendars. We'll start with Supervisor Simon.
Okay. I'm going to keep it short and sweet here. During our hiatus of meetings, attended North Coast EMS. We had a meeting on that, our quarterly meeting. Also attended our, our insurance committee meeting also. We'll have some updates in the future about insurance and how we're moving forward. But I did just want to say that I know while our employees were inundated throughout, you know, throughout the pandemic with emails about different things, if you have any questions about insurance opportunities, both telehealth, other things, please reach out to Human Resource. And I know they will give some information. So please just pay attention to those, you know, insurance emails as they come from our human resources, because there may be opportunities that could benefit you, you know, while you're using those. With that, have tomorrow, LTA was canceled for tomorrow. So tomorrow afternoon, have CDD Committee Meeting on Wednesday, on Thursday. Flying right into it, we're already done here. So have a conflict on Thursday, have both the Mental Health Board meeting and have the Disaster Council meeting. So I'm going to be attending the Disaster Council meeting on Thursday at 3:00. So we'll be having that, our quarterly meeting. And then don't have anything on 16th, 17th, 18th, we'll be doing some short traveling in California here. And then back on Monday, we have the Risk Reduction Authority, which I'm excited to say, this will be our first meeting that we have NCO in as our consultant and coordinator. So, you know, the next couple of meetings, we're going to be moving forward. I want to thank the CAO. I want to thank NCO for stepping up. But I really want to thank Carol and her office and all the participants that have helped carry the RRA to get to this point. But we're excited about the opportunities down the road. We have already looked at some grant opportunities to expand the capacity. And, you know, it's taken a few years, three years exact, but I think we're taking the right steps and it's going to be exciting moving forward. And then Tuesday, back here for the meeting. And there may be other meetings that pop up, but they're not on there now.
And they're always will be. Thank you very much. Let's go on to Supervisor Crandall.
So I'll go back to a couple of meetings that took place. First and foremost, our East Region Town Hall on the 7th took place. We had a really big turnout. I'd say at least 25 to 30 people there, where Melinda Rivera from PG&E gave a presentation about the, you know, PSPS situation and discussion. Also Lieutenant Pollock was there to discuss some of the situations with the, you know, deputies and sheriff activity and whatnot. And so that was a very, it was a very, very good to see in person, people attending, and we had at least four people on Zoom. Also attended the CSA where Andrew Williams from Code Enforcement was, was present to discuss some things. And there's a lot of frustration out there with the illegal grows and whatnot. And I know that's a common area of discussion. Middle Creek Restoration took place Monday, where we are working to line up some of the, some of ours, you know, tasks to ensure that when we ask or in hopes of getting an extension, we are going to try and line up all of the other agencies like PG&E and Caltrans and whatnot to have those ready. And that way, we don't miss any steps when it comes to moving forward with that project, Middle Creek Restoration. So it was a very productive meeting. And we're hoping to meet with a couple of agencies like PG&E and another tribe that's wanting to talk with us about some of the acquisition or even zoning situation. I also met with, had discussion with some folks from the Nice Neighborhood Watch who discussed some things about flock safety and cameras in the district in looking at adding to the repertoire that the Sheriff's Department has. Let's see, I have today Agenda Review. And then tomorrow, I have an appointment I have to be at for the VA, but I will be available by phone. Checking in with, I guess, our meeting with the Director Thursday with a Director from Special Districts. Cal Water is having a, I think it is a workshop, a rate workshop, that I'll be present with them discussing that as there's, you know, they're a group that does our Lucerne Water. So it's, they're very active and we're appreciating that. They'll also be at the last meeting on Friday to give out some other insights and some presentations on what to do with the situation in water and whatnot. And Monday, I have a meeting with CAO, back here Tuesday for the board supervisor's meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
For my reports, yesterday, there was a media release, public notice sent out for the Scotts Valley Water Conservation District. We're looking for three new directors. So if you live in the Scotts Valley area and interested in filling out a form for candidacy, you can go up to the Register of Voters and find out which district you would fall under. It's all under your address in the Scotts Valley. Or you can give me a call at 849-4414. And we will also be talking more about this at the Scotts Valley Community Meeting that will be held on July 26. So again, give me a call, 849-4414, and we can help you get the paperwork or find information on how to go about that. My calendar is really light this next week. It looks like I have a meeting tomorrow at 8:15 with Carol. And then it's pretty much open from, from there. And then just Monday, preparing for Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pisca?
So last week, um, better? Okay. We had quite a few meetings last week. We had the Ag Committee met. We had a special guest, Supervisor Sabatier, to discuss his request for that committee. Now, we're going into the heavy season for our Ag Committee. So our next meeting won't be until November. One of the things that we talked about was how we could get their input on improving our application process. As our CDD is in a transition, I'm going to work to get them some, some, the process as it stands now so that we can have them review it and get back to us throughout the fall. But this is really getting into their busy season and we really want to just let them do their thing right now. I went out on the lake with Water Resources Department last week, the coolest day of the week. I don't know if it reached 100, but I, you know, it was, it was great. I got to participate in the sampling of both water and sediment. So it's really a great experience for me. We have such an amazing team in place to do that work. The Fire Safe Council met. As the Fire Safe Council stands right now, it is an ad hoc committee of the Board of Supervisors. So the work that we're doing right now is trying to get it to develop into a 501(c)(3) so it can stand on its own, accept funding, really pioneer projects. The State Fire Safe Council has a grant available, $175,000 for each, for 30 counties in the state, giving preference to counties that have endured fires, have vulnerable populations. We feel really confident how we're going to get that grant. We have, the Risk Reduction Authority has staff now with NCO and Tammy Alex, who attended the webinar for the grant. And this is just days before the contract was signed. She was already doing it. So NC, so each county can apply one time. NCO can apply on behalf of our county. So we, we are, this, this person that we have contracted with has already potentially made us $175,000 to develop and staff our Fire Safe Council, which is phenomenal news. So we're really excited. Supervisor Simon mentioned that we have opportunities, we have momentum. Things are just really cooking right now. So it's really exciting. The Fire Safe Council has a subcommittee working on how to really develop that 501(c)(3) to stand on their own and, and function in the way that they, they want themselves to and we need them to. So it's great. We had the roadmap task force, but I'll let Supervisor Sabatier report on that. I had to leave a couple of minutes early. And I went to the Buckingham Homeowners Association Annual Meeting Saturday morning and met with those constituents. I shared a lot about what we've been doing here. It was just a really great meeting. Their water company is doing some really innovative work to have a platform float to draw water when their, their intake pipes will be impacted due to the low lake levels. So they're doing a lot of work and they were really excited to hear everything that we're doing here. So tomorrow morning, there's a medical advisory committee. I'm meeting with MIT Matters. This is a conversation about housing recovery, wildfire prevention, and land use planning in Lake County from 2015 to the present. So that's an interview that I've got at 1 o'clock. We're going to be having our Community Development Committee meeting later in the afternoon. There's a Carers ARPA ad hoc committee meeting on Thursday, followed by Disaster Council. The Cockberry Council will be meeting that evening for the first time in person, but outdoors. This is a big deal. It's a five-year anniversary. So it'll be a little bit celebratory in nature Friday. I will be going out to Canuckti to visit with the manager, Russ Hamel. Saturday is the 10th anniversary of the LA Stage Celebration. If anybody's interested in going to that, it's going to be a really fun day. I think it starts at 10 and goes till 3:00. I will not be there because I am picking my children up from camp. And then my Monday meeting with our CAO and that's it for me.
Thank you very much. I will be brief so we can get to our lunch break at one point in time. Not sure if it'll be later today or tomorrow. We will be doing Agenda Review for next week's meeting. Be meeting with our CAO later today as well about some other discussions that I wish to have. LTA, as it was discussed, has been canceled tomorrow, but that is being replaced with an EMS discussion that we will have on Thursday. Let's see, I'm going to try to join the Blue Zone meeting. I haven't been able to join that lately as I always, conflicts with some of my other meetings. I'll be meeting with Special Districts later on that day as well with Supervisor Crandall, I believe. Is that correct?
Oh, that Thursday? Yes.
Yeah. And then we will be looking at the American Rescue Plan Ad Hoc Committee to discuss where those funds will be going. And I know earlier, somebody said we were getting $12 million. We are in total, but it's split in half. So we get, the first part is six point something, and next year, we'll get another six points. So I think it's 12.3 million or something like that total. I forget what the specific amount. Later on, I have an update from CSAC with COVID-19 and how it's going throughout the state. And then Clear Lake City Council Meeting, I'll be attending that. And then preparing for our meeting on Monday and meeting with our CAO so that we can be all ready for our Tuesday meeting. Did have the roadmap task force. Our main topic of discussion was to look at which community to focus our efforts on. Again, the roadmap task force is about cleaning up a community and looking at permanent changes. So that includes discussions with law enforcement, discussion with code enforcement, animal control. And we will be bringing in our district attorney in our next upcoming meetings, depending on their schedule, as that is absolutely a part of keeping people accountable for the issues that we're trying to clean up as well. We are looking at Clear Lake Oaks, though I will say that's not official quite yet, because Clear Lake Oaks, especially if we look at it as a zip code, is a much larger area than just Clear Lake Oaks. So we haven't outlined the specific area that we will be calling the community focus for this roadmap task force. But we'll come back with more information as we keep going. And I'll stop there. It is 12:10. We will go ahead and take a 15-minute lunch and come back at 1:00 PM. I don't believe I got...
Five zero.
Fifty. No, 15 would be a break and not a lunch break. But thank you for asking for clarification on that. I didn't get a response in the Zoom room, but I'm guessing we will all be in our offices to do Zoom interviews with PHO for our closed session. And now I will just read all of the closed session agenda, just in case that we are able to do all of that. And we will reconvene the public session at 4:00 PM. So please be back on to Zoom or in the chamber if you wish to continue to hear our discussions. 8.1, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B. A, Interviews for Public Health Officer. B, Appointment of Public Health Officer. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation. Title, Internim Community Development Director. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, Flash versus County of Lake Ita. 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake Ita. Section 54956.9d1, City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake Ita. And with that, we will go ahead and go into our lunch session and reconvene our public session at 4:00 p.m. We will be in closed session at 1:00.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure everyone did get the Zoom invite for the 1:00 p.m. If anyone didn't get it, please let me know. Thank you.
We will. Thank you very much.
And I'm going to head home for the rest of the meeting.
All right. We are back. Thank you for being patient. It is 4:09. We said we would be back at 4:00 p.m. We are going to continue where we left off on our agenda, which was item 6.6, which sounds horrible to say, it was our 10:10 a.m. item. Presentation of Big Valley Groundwater Basin Sustainability Groundwater Management Act, SIGMA, and Implementation. And I will pass this over to our Water Resource Team.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors. My name is Marina Delajanas, and I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director of the Lake County Watershed Protection District. And I also serve as the lead for our Big Valley Groundwater Basin Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. So I do have a presentation. I am here to present an update on our Big Valley SIGMA Implementation, which is our Sustainable Groundwater Management Act for our Big Valley Groundwater Basin. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you all. Can everyone see that okay?
Not at this moment. And I don't see a loading screen either.
One moment there with me.
There we go. It's popping up. There it is.
All righty. Okay. All right. Thank you all again. So just a little bit of what I'm going to be covering over today. This is, we are going to do just an overview of the work that we've completed to date in terms of SIGMA. We are still going to talk about our Big Valley GSPAC. I'm going to introduce to you our consultants who are helping with our Big Valley GSP development. I will be highlighting our Big Valley Basin Public Meetings and then the contact information for our district and anything that any folks want to reach out to regarding our Big Valley Groundwater Basin SIGMA. I will have my contact information at the very end for folks to reach out to us. And we'll also have time at the end for Q and A. So before I dive too deeply into the presentation, I would just like to go over a few of the acronyms that I will be highlighting today. So DWR stands for the California Department of Water Resources. GSA is our Groundwater Sustainability Agency. As a reminder, our Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District serve as our Big Valley GSA. GSP stands for Groundwater Sustainability Plan, which again, that is due to the state by January 31, 2022. GSPAC is our Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. FSS is our Facilitation Support Services, and SIGMA is Sustainable Groundwater Management Act of 2014. All right. So our Big Valley Groundwater Basin. As a refresher, we have one medium priority basin under SIGMA. So in 2019, our district was awarded Facilitation Support Services from DWR. Now, FSS is a contract between the state and an outside consulting firm to aid in our Big Valley GSP Stakeholder Engagement and Outreach. In January of this past year, we released our Request for Proposals to outside consultants for our Groundwater Sustainability Plan Development. After RFP process, we awarded our consultants on March 23 of 2021. And also in June of 2021, our GSP Charter Document... Excuse me. So in the meantime, we've held six Big Valley GSA and GSPAC Public Meetings. In April of 2021, our Big Valley GSA approved and adopted the GSA Charter Document. And then this Charter Document was also amended in June of 2021. And then we actually, at the first of this month, we requested an amendment for the same Facilitation Support Services from DWR, and that is in the process of getting approved by the California Department of Water Resources. So some other key dates that I would like to highlight that are not on this current timeline is we are working with DWR through applying for TSS Services, which is Technical Support Services. That's very similar to our FSS Services that we have. So again, that is a contract that the state will have with an outside consulting firm. And that work is to do groundwater monitoring in our groundwater basin. And then it is our anticipation that we will be applying for our Proposition 68 Sustainable Groundwater Management Implementation Grant in 2021, 2022. And again, that will be piggybacked off of the grant that we applied for and awarded in 2019, which was our planning grant, which how, that's how we were able to provide, develop, and implement our Big Valley Groundwater Basin Sustainability Plan. All right. So our GSPAC. So SIGMA requires GSAs to incorporate all beneficial uses and users in the entire GSP development process. And this is outlined in Water Code 10723.2, which requires GSAs to consider the interests of all beneficial uses and users of groundwater as well as those responsible for implementing GSPs. Now, SIGMA also outlines the local entity. So us here at the district are the ones tasked with developing and implementing this GSP. And again, we work closely with folks at the state level and then also our basin, the community members in our basin to develop this GSP. But it's us here at the district tasked with developing this GSP and implementing it, since we, the district, is tasked with ensuring the protection of all waters, including surface waters and groundwaters of the county. So there are FSS Services that we're awarded through DWR. We have been working very closely with StanTech Consulting Services, conducting discussions with Big Valley Basin stakeholders for the development of our Stakeholder Engagement and Outreach Plan. And these discussions have been going over for a little over a year now. And the goal of these discussions is to leverage knowledge and ensure effective and active stakeholder engagement for the successful development of our Big Valley GSP. So in April of 2021, the Big Valley GSA adopted the Big Valley GSA Charter Document, which can be found on our Water Resources website. And this document establishes the official non-voting committee. This committee works collaboratively with the GSA, stakeholders, district, and the consultants to aid in successful development of the GSP. So the GSPAC, again, that stands for Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Basin Advisory Committee. We love acronyms here in the water world. Serves as a strong, effective advocate for the interest group represented. Again, they work collaboratively with other committee members and the GSAs. They collectively reflect diversity of interests, et cetera. Again, as outlined in Water Code 10723, and act in a manner that enhances trust among all stakeholders. So here on the right-hand side, you can see some of our members that have stepped up to the plate and who serve as our GSPAC members. We did just update this. One of the amendments that we included in the most recent Charter Document is we have now filled the environmental ecosystem seat, and that is Val Nixon with the Lake County Land Trust. And we only have one more seat on our actual GSPAC that is open, and that is our disadvantaged community representative. So again, all these beneficial uses and users who are eligible to sit on the GSPAC are outlined in Water Code 10723. So again, just outlining some of our GSPAC representatives. We have folks from the Lake County Farm Bureau, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Chai Council for the Clear Lake Hitch, Lake County Special Districts, Kelseyville Unified School District, private well owners, and again, the Lake County Land Trust. So these are all folks that live in the basement, have interest in the groundwater basin. All right. So our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, our consultant onboarding. So again, the development and implementation of our GSP, which is required by SIGMA, again, due to the state by January 31, 2022, was funded entirely through funds awarded to the district through the Prop 68 Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, Round Three Planning. And we were awarded a little, under $1.4 million, zero-dollar cost share from the department to develop and implement this GSP. So to ensure that we had the capacity and knowledge and resources to develop this GSP, the county went through the RFP process, which is Request for Proposals, as outlined in County Code Abordments, Chapter 10, Purchasing. So through this process, again, we released this RFP proposal to interested consultants and eligible consultants. In January of this past year, we received three different RFPs from qualified consulting firms. And through this entire selection process, the district onboarded a selection consultant committee who reviewed all proposals and identified Ludorf and Skalmanini and StanTech Consulting Firm as the most qualified firms to successfully complete the project at hand. So Ludorf and Skalmanini and StanTech are two different consulting firms, but they are a joint effort, and they submitted a proposal together, and they are the ones working collaboratively with us, with our GSA, with our GSPAC, and our committee members to ensure that we complete the project at hand. All right. So again, Ludorf and Skalmanini and StanTech, they are based out of the Woodland and Sacramento areas. So Ludorf and Skalmanini and StanTech have the expertise and capacity to fulfill their requirements to complete the project at hand under a quickly approaching project submission timeline. Again, this project is due to the state. We have to go through a review process, et cetera, by January 31, 2022. So a lot of work to be done. It is moving very, very quickly, as you all will see, and I will be presenting on here in the near future again. So between our department and then also Ludorf and Skalmanini, we have a little under 40 different team members who are working collaboratively to complete the project at hand. So again, SIGMA also outlines the tasks for successful GSP development. I will very quickly go over these tasks. But again, I will be updating the board as we move along, and then I will be presenting in the next slide. I will be presenting our Big Valley Basin Public Meeting information, where again, we will be breaking down these tasks individually. So the tasks that Ludorf and Skalmanini and StanTech are working with us on for our Big Valley GSP development include project management. Task two is communications and public comment. Task three is data collection. Task four is defining the area plan and basin setting. Task five is modeling and water budget analysis. Task six is developing sustainability management criteria. Task seven is designing sustainability progress monitoring program. Task eight is identifying and evaluating projects and management actions. Task nine is developing GSP implementation, progress class, detailed schedule, and reporting. And then task 10 is to compile and complete the GSP for adoption, which again, is by January 31, 2022. So since we onboarded our consultants, they have been working very hard to help us move along with our timeline. So some of the work that they've done to date is they have drafted up Chapters 1, 2.1, 2.2.1, and 2.2.2 for review. And we're releasing these same chapters for public review in the near future. So again, these most recent chapters are in draft form. They have sent that to the GSPAC for review, and we will be releasing those out to the public for public review and comment in the near future. So keep your eyes peeled for that. Again, with that, so the consultants also understand how much knowledge and information that our local public was able to carry, is able to carry for the development of our Big Valley GSP. So along with bringing our consultants onboard and having a GSA and having a GSPAC and working with the district, we will also be forming ad hoc committees. And we're in the very, very early stages of forming those ad hoc committees that is open to the public to participate in. With these ad hoc committees, we'll be covering information on hydraulic monitoring, stakeholder engagement outreach. So again, I will be providing information in the next few slides on how folks can stay tuned with that. If they're interested in participating in those ad hoc committees, or again, just anything in terms of Big Valley GSP development, I will have that link so you can participate in those as necessary. And again, making sure that our folks are at the table when necessary. All right. So our Big Valley Basin Meetings, our Big Valley GSPAC Meetings, these are open to the public. They're held at 11:00 a.m. Pacific Time on the fourth Friday every month. We do have this information on our Water Resources website that has the dates already outlined. So put a placeholder in your calendar if you want to stay up to date on all things Big Valley. Again, our planning, we are planning on meeting from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30. But since we do have a lot on our plate, don't be surprised if some of our meetings run a little bit over, but we will be sure to notify folks properly on how long the meetings will come. And then especially if we have ad hoc committee members or committee meetings, we will also be releasing that information to the public so folks are able to participate in those. So right now, our meetings have been held currently. Again, we've met six times so far with our Big Valley Basin Public Meetings, along with our Big Valley Standing GSPAC Meetings. I will be coming to the board at least once a month for an update on our Big Valley Basin GSP Development update. So again, our meetings are currently held virtual, but our next GSPAC meeting, which will be taking place on July 23, we will be discussing the possibility of holding these meetings in a hybrid model of both virtual and in-person. We anticipate that for the remainder of our Big Valley GSP development, that these meetings will be held in that hybrid model to ensure that all folks feel comfortable and are able to participate in any meeting that they feel necessary. These meetings are also recorded. So if you're not able to participate, have no fear. You can still participate in the fun, and you can watch these via live on our YouTube page. If you go on YouTube and you look up Lake County Water Resources Department, we have it broken down so you can listen in our Big Valley Groundwater Basin Meetings. And these meeting materials and information are also found on the Water Resources website. So if you would like to stay connected and get all the email glass, all of the meeting materials, anything in terms of Big Valley Groundwater Basin, we have this awesome opt-in page that you can click on on our Water Resources website. We just fill out your name, your email, your address, and then also if you're located within the groundwater basin. And if you're unsure if you're located within the groundwater basin, we also have a handy tool provided to us by the California Department of Water Resources, where you can click on your address and see if you reside in our Big Valley Basin, or if you're interested in looking about, if you're interested in exploring other prioritized basins under SIGMA. So with that being said, I will go ahead and open it up to Q and A. Again, my name is Marina Delajanas. I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director and also the lead for our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. I also have the link to our Water Resources page where you can get up to date. We update this on a weekly basis that has all things. We have all the draft items on there. We have all the Charter Documents, anything in terms of Big Valley and GSP development, and also from our friends at the state levels with the State Water Resource Control Board and the work that they do with SIGMA, and then also the California Department of Water Resources. So with that being said, I will open it up for Q and A.
Thank you so much for your presentation today. Are there any questions from Board of Supervisors? And Sam, if it's possible, to turn the lights back on? Perfect. Thank you so much. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I just have one question, Deputy Delajanas. When you ask for or explain about the disadvantaged community, is that within the Big Valley Basin, or is that Lake County-wide? I just wanted to make sure it's noted.
That's a great question, Supervisor Crandall. So that is one of our conversations that we have been having. Ideally, that disadvantaged community representative resides in the Big Valley Basin. We do have some folks who have been participating who just represent disadvantaged communities statewide as well. So that's one thing that we are in close communications with, and we're still trying to figure out. So if anyone is interested at all, we do have that opportunity for you to come to our Big Valley GSPAC Meetings and present if you're interested and whatnot. And that will be a discussion amongst the GSPAC members. Again, this is a non-voting member, so that would eventually have to go before the board. There'd have to be some sort of concise yes or no between the GSPAC. But that's a great question, and we're still trying to figure that out.
Thank you for the question. Any further comments or questions from the board? I just have a question of curiosity. You didn't provide new information or data today, just more a conversation of the process that's being taken in order to get to our final goal. I know that you've been collecting data over many years. It's not just data from this year. But how is this year's data being implemented for the 2042 goal to make sure that we're not just using this as a kind of a baseline for the water that we should expect to have? I know that this year is not an anomaly, but it's an extreme exceptional drought at this moment in comparison to your average water situation.
Right. And that's a great question, Mr. Chair. So thank you for that. And that is one thing, the whole goal of SIGMA is to identify and address climate change. So as you mentioned, this year is not an anomaly. It's going to happen again. So we are taking that data, along with the data that we've been able to collect since the sixties, we're also working collaboratively with the Farm Bureau, Special Districts, et cetera, other entities and groups who have data from the basin and whatnot, and looking forward. So one of the whole tasks of Sigma is to look at the data that we've collected, including this year, analyzing that data and creating a hydrologic model. So with the data that we've created, we can look at what we've seen and anticipate where we're gonna go in the future. So that's another reason why we brought on consultants onboard, to help us develop that model. They have grand expertise in developing these models with the idea of climate change in hand. And another thing, though, we're also looking at in terms of our, not only our groundwater data that we've been collecting for the wells in the basin, but also lake levels, precipitation, et cetera. So taking a variety of factors, same with land use, anticipated, you know, plans for that basin, so what are, what are the goals, what's gonna happen in that basin, trying to look forward, not just look back. So that is a big focus of our GSP development and implementation, so getting on the data that we have, but also anticipating what's to come in the future.
Appreciate the clarification. Any further comments or questions before we open it up for the public? All right, let's go ahead and open it up. Any questions from the boardroom? Please come up to the microphone and ask your question. And if you are in the Zoom room, please go ahead and click the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or dial star nine if you're calling via telephone, and we'll get to you after this comment.
I'm John Moss. I live on Cobb Mountain, but I do go through Big Valley to get to Lakeport sometimes, and I'd like to know if you have driven through Big Valley and seen the walnut orchards that are dry. There's walnut orchards with no leaves on them. I think there's a very serious problem with water. I didn't understand what you were saying, you were talking too fast for me, I'll have to look it up on the internet, but I hope that you can recognize that we are in trouble in Big Valley with water, walnuts that don't have any green leaves, walnut trees. I hope you drive through and look at them, it hurts your heart. Thank you.
Thank you. I do know that we did receive a report earlier this year, I don't think it was necessarily the leaves of the walnut trees, I think it was the actual walnuts themselves, that due to the quick change in temperature sometime in December, where it warmed up to a temperature that is kind of uncommon for December, that some of the walnuts were, were having some issues in the budding stage because of that. So that could be some of what you're seeing, but again, I don't think that was necessarily with the leaves, so that could be a drought issue as well, or maybe it's, unfortunately, walnuts are disappearing, and maybe they're no longer being tended to at that point, I don't know which specific field you're talking about.
I can speak to that.
There we go.
Don, yes. We've been talking about that in the Ag Committee, the, the dry summer last year paired with the very warm fall, and then quick change to cold temperatures, the trees did not go into dormancy gradually like they normally would, and when trees were expected to bud out this spring, there was significant damage that was noticed by almost all the growers for most of the trees. Right now, the growers are evaluating the trees if they will ever be productive again. So you're going to see big decisions made with the walnut groves, and those decisions are not being taken lightly by our local growers, and they're, you know, this is something that we're working on, our UC Extension is giving us information on that, there are some programs to help the growers, but, but this, this is climate change, and this is devastating to our walnut trees.
Thank you for the explanation.
And I would like to, can I say something on that?
Please.
Thank you, and thank you for that Supervisor Pyska. So one thing, our, our consultants actually did come to our Big Valley Basin this past Friday, which was really exciting, we didn't know if that was gonna be possible just with COVID. Of course, we have safety measures in place, so they have come to the basin, they were able to see it firsthand, because, you know, looking at data on Excel document can be a lot different than actually being able to see it firsthandly as well. We also have folks on our Gspec Committee, and we are in active communication with walnut growers, farmers, et cetera, so we have lots of Ag representatives on our Big Valley Basin, and be able to have these conversations with them, seeing pictures, you know, doing our monthly well runs, we go out once a month, and we do our well runs, the district in itself, in our Big Valley Basin. So we do see this firsthandly, and we are not the only county, unfortunately, who are dealing with situations of this nature. Again, leaning on our friends at the state and our consultants to get the best information out there for not only what we're experiencing this year, but with anticipated, that anticipation that this is gonna happen in years to come, so.
And it is not just the walnuts, they're also seeing it with the wine grapes.
All right, thank you very much. Any further comments from the boardroom? Please.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Thomas Nichols of Scotts Valley. I would like to propose that the Board of Supervisors, if they haven't already considered it, to put a moratorium on all future plant, vineyards, hemp grows, legal cannabis, and golf courses, till we get out of this drought. This is crazy. Despite all of this information we just heard, and all this stuff that's going on with the groundwater, it's, it's, it isn't gonna matter. We are, we are in a serious problem. There are serious rumors going around in the town of Nice right now, they're very concerning, and if they are true, I would not want to be in any of your shoes. We have to stop this growth of water use and get on some kind of conservation with the agricultural departments and agriculture. And again, we need to relook at the lake that was proposed, or the reservoir that was proposed in Scotts Creek, and start thinking about that, because like they say, we're gonna experience these droughts over and over and over again, and we have an opportunity to put a dam in there, it would be most beneficial for the county, and the city of Lakeport especially. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? And let me check on the Zoom room, I don't see any hands up, but are there any comments in the Zoom room before we do a do-over? And seeing none, if you can keep, keep it succinct, please?
It's a different subject.
But, well, we, we need to make sure we don't stray far from the Sigma subject, because that is the agenda item that we are discussing. So we're not discussing the drought specifically, we are specifically speaking of Big Valley Basin and the Sigma project that is being taken on due to the legislation from the state of California.
What I could say is about water use.
Then, then please relate it back to the Big Basin, Valley, Big Valley Basin and, and water use.
Can I say something else?
And again, let's keep it as closely as possible to the Big Valley Basin Sigma.
We're studying the Big Valley groundwater basin, what is going on with the Scotts Valley water basin?
So due to the legislation from the state of California, the Big Valley Basin has been specifically the focus of the state, and we are supposed to tackle the subject matter of keeping track and studying Big Basin, sorry, Big Valley Basin, in order to ensure the long-term longevity of the area of Big Valley. That is a state function, and that we have to carry out that mission.
Why is the state looking at, at just that basin and not others?
And so they have been looking at all other basins, it's a matter of agriculture and land use, and making sure that it will continue again into the future. So they're not looking at everything, but they're definitely looking at mainly agricultural areas, and how long will it last, based on the current uses. And I'll, I'll let Deputy Director Delajonis give you more details in case that I just butchered that explanation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, you did a great job. So yes, the state is looking at other basins too, so as we know, there are many other groundwater basins throughout the state, but the state, per Bulletin 118, and again, this information, I'm more than happy to provide that information on how they identify priority basins. So Sigma is specifically for priority basins, there is high priority basins, medium priority basins, and low priority basins. Throughout the thirteen different groundwater basins in Lake County, we only have one medium priority basin, and again, that basin was identified, it's not in, you know, the water is not going anywhere, and we're not at severe risk, that's just a basin that we need to ensure that we reach that sustainability and meet that sustainability cri- criteria by January thirty-first, or by January twenty forty-two. So the state does look at other basins, these, they just have priority basins that we're looking at, and our focus this current year is Big Valley Basin, per the state's evaluation, which is an entire assessment that they do, you know, that they've been doing for many, many years, and they have all that information, and again, I have information on other, on other basins as well, but as Mr. Chair said, we only have one priority basin in, in the county.
And if I'm correct, we were at one point looking at the Upper Lake Basin, but by providing newer information, it was then taken off the list from the state for us to prioritize, is that correct?
That is correct. And then going off of Scotts Valley, just to address that comment that was previously stated, the consultants are looking at Scotts Valley too, again, we're not analyzing or assessing Scotts Valley, but we do understand Sigma also outlines that we have to look at surrounding basins as well, and Scotts Valley is the closest basin, although it is not a priority basin, under Sigma, we are looking at Scotts Valley too, when we're doing our hydrologic modeling, because as we know, groundwater has no, has no, you know, county borders, et cetera, it flows and how it wants to flow. So we're not doing a Big Valley, or we're not doing a GSP for Scotts Valley, but we are taking that into consideration during our development and our modeling, et cetera. And we'll be sharing that information too during our Big Valley Gspec meetings and public meetings as well.
All right, thank you very much for that further information. We do have a hand up in the Zoom room, Betsy Khan, if we can unmute, please.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you, thank you Chair, and thank you Marina, and I just wanted to clarify something, I've been involved, the Essential Public Information Center has been involved in the early phases of identifying the impaired groundwater bodies in the county of Lake, and participated along with the Big Valley, Ranjuriya Band of Pomo Indians and the city of Lakeport, in, in some correspondence with the state about the Scotts Valley groundwater basin. At the time, the Department of Water Resources, Scott DeLeon and your staff were able to convince the state Department of Water Resources that Scotts Valley groundwater basin is not at that level of impairment, because it's not being overdrafted. There was a good deal of technical documentation and, and information exchanged about that issue. I know of absolutely no interest in the Upper Lake groundwater basin, and I am a volunteer for the ground, for the Upper Lake County Water District. You know, we have our own sustainable groundwater management program, we have, you know, to, to protect the groundwater basin, even though it is not at this time declared as an impaired water body. But this is the second time I've heard you, Mr. Chair, speak about this Upper Lake inquiry. If there is such a thing, I would really appreciate knowing more about it. So Marina, I'll, I'll email you and, and maybe ask you for some details, if you, if you don't mind. This is something I've worked for probably almost twenty years on supporting the Upper Lake groundwater, Upper Lake County Water District as a volunteer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that is definitely the right contact for the correct information, as I may have misspoken when I said Upper Lake, I just remembered that there was another basin, that we needed to submit some information. Any further public comment on the Zoom room or in the boardroom? We have somebody in the boardroom, please come up.
Good afternoon, I've been here since nineteen sixty, and we've had at least four or five droughts, this is nothing new. There was a, a report came out the other day in twenty nineteen, we are, all of our reservoirs in California were at a hundred and twenty-eight percent full, that was able to sustain at least for five years. We are just mismanaging water, that's all this is.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Any further comments from the public, looking at the Zoom room and the boardroom? And seeing none, let's bring it back to the board, any further comments or questions for our Water Department? All right, Deputy Director, thank you so much for your time and your presentation.
Thank you so much.
And I believe that you and your team will continue into item six point seven, ten twenty-five AM, Civic Spark Fellows' Presentation, the Clear Lake Shoreline Assessment and Inventory Project for the Lake County Water Resources Department.
That is correct, you guys are stuck with me once more, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I have two Civic Spark Fellows who are joining us today, Nicole Demato and Liam Healy, who will be covering the work that they've been doing these past eleven months for their AmeriCorps project, and let me go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. So hello again, everyone, Happy Tuesday. Marina Delajonis here, I serve as Deputy Water Resources Director, I also serve as the Site Supervisor for the twenty twenty, the, the current Civic Spark Fellows who have been working with us the past eleven months for their Clear Lake Shoreline Assessment and Inventory Project for the Lake County Water Resources Department. So I'm just gonna be covering very briefly what is Civic Spark. So Civic Spark is a governor's initiative AmeriCorps program dedicated to building capacity for local public agencies to address community resilience issues such as climate change, water resource management, housing and mobility. Civic Spark is a program of the Local Government Commission in partnership with the state of California through the Office and Research, Office of Planning and Research and California Volunteers. So all fellows, again, this is just a state brand program, they will spend at least one thousand seven hundred hours, keyword at least, over the eleventh months of service year, serving full term with their, full-time with their host agency. Along with completing tasks outlined in their placement site project, Civic Spark Fellows are also required to complete obligations for their AmeriCorps service year, such as hosting and participating volunteer engagement projects, career development workshops, progress reports, and a project capstone poster project amongst other obligations. So since joining the Lake County community in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, Civic Spark has hosted fourteen fellows throughout the community of Lake County, which is awesome, as we are one of the only rural communities that have Civic Spark Fellows, and the fact that we have such a great presence from the past few years is, is awesome, but I'm biased, I love Civic Spark. So some of the former and current Civic Spark placement sites include Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District down in South County, Lake County Special Districts, City of Lakeport Special Districts, and the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center with, of course, Water Resources. So with that being said, I am elated to introduce our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one AmeriCorps Civic Spark, Civic Spark Fellows, which include Liam Healy and Nicole Demato, who have been working with the department the last eleven months, developing and implementing the Clear Lake Shoreline Assessment and Inventory. So with that, I am gonna pass it over to our fellows.
Thank you Marina, as Marina said, my name is Nicole Demato, and I am one of the Civic Spark Fellows with Lake County Water Resources. To kick us off, I want to do a little bit of framing for our project. As Marina said, it is the Clear Lake Shoreline Assessment and Inventory, and essentially, this consists of three major components. Number one is data collection, and my co-fellow here, Liam, will give us a nice overview of our, our work in the field and our data collection efforts. Our second component is policy analysis, which I'll dive into a little bit later with regard to the chapter twenty-three of the county code of ordinances. And finally, public outreach and stakeholder engagement, and I will also dive into this a bit later. So Liam, if you want to kick us off?
Yeah, hello, my name is Liam, and in terms of our data collection aspect of our project, we relied upon a methodology called Score the Shore, which is a quantitative tool designed towards delineating the shoreline based on its natural and built features, and this was developed by the Michigan Clean Water Corps. So some of the main things that we're looking at with Score the Shore for the Clear Lake Shoreline are the percentage of emergent vegetation, which is things such as tulips, the amount of woody debris, which is the, just branches and trees that are in the water, which provide the critical habitat and also stabilize the shoreline, additionally, things such as erosion, vertical artificial, which are things such as seawalls, and sloped artificial, which would be riprap, as well as, just to touch on a couple, there are many other things that we look at as well. So specifically for Clear Lake itself, we collected data in approximately one thousand foot transects, and split up Clear Lake into seventeen individual regions. So with this data that we are collecting and through the Score the Shore, it can provide lake managers and the public the information they need towards maintaining existing healthy areas, and then also steps towards improving degraded ones along the Clear Lake Shoreline. Next slide, please. So a big part of our project was digitizing data collection, and this was mostly done through the Esri platform, and right here is an example of ArcGIS Collector. So with Collector, you can pretty much completely digitize your, oh, could you go back a couple slides? Yeah, okay, yeah. So with Collector, you can digitize how you want to portray your data, and so right here is an example of one of our transects that I mentioned previously, where we collect data on in the one thousand foot segments. So that right there is a transect for our Sota Bay region, which is also a hedge priority region, and the pink dots at each end of the transect represent the start and endpoints. Could you go ahead, please? So in terms of, once we are located to our area, then we collect data specifically through this app called ArcGIS Survey One Two Three, and right here is an example of just being the form being filled out with it, auto-populating the calculations that are built into the survey itself, as it being a quantitative tool. So the ultimate goal, or the ultimate result of each section is that it gives an overall section score based upon the riparian zone characteristics, the lateral zone, and the erosion control. So these are some of the main things we're looking at, and we also take GPS start and endpoints, and that pretty much gives an individual score for each section of the shoreline. Next slide, please. So right here is, is Clear Lake, and these, and in color are the transects that we have completed. The red colors represent transects with lower overall section scores, so those would be areas with potentially not as much, not as healthy of shorelines. Yellow and orange are about medium section scores, and green are good section scores with healthier shorelines, and white are areas that we have not yet addressed. So next slide, please. So some of our initial results here, on the left-hand side, as I mentioned, here are the total section scores, so with- So with, and these are some of our regions as well that we have assessed. So Sota Bay, right here, is one of our higher regions in terms of overall section score with Lakeport, and then areas in the lower arm coming up afterwards, and then areas such as Nice and Lucerne and Clear Lake have overall lower section scores. So another thing this methodology also addresses is developmental density, which examines the number of houses and major buildings as well as docks in a section of shoreline, excuse me. So higher section, higher developmental densities are obviously areas with higher developmental density. So Clear Lake is an area with very high developmental density, as you can see, 23.9, and then followed up with all very similarly, Lakeport, Nice, Lucerne, and the lower arm hovering around 12, and then Sota Bay is an area with lower developmental density. So in terms of our current progress, we have completed 93 of 354 transects. We did get a bit of a late start on this project, started in April, but that does account for 26% of the transects on the lake. So, next slide.
Awesome. Thank you, Liam. So I can jump in here and talk a bit about our stakeholder engagement and public outreach efforts, which I mentioned is the second of our three components of the Clear Lake Shoreline Assessment and Inventory. So we have several different methods that we use in order to engage the community throughout our service year, the first of which is a survey, which was intended to gauge public knowledge perceptions and priorities regarding the Clear Lake shoreline. So we shared the survey through Facebook. We had QR codes hung up all throughout the county so people could scan it. We ended up with 67 responses to our survey, which was awesome, and I can highlight a few of the findings that we got from the survey. So three-quarters of respondents believe that dilapidated or broken-down docks are a large problem around Clear Lake, and over half of respondents think that our department, the Water Resources Department, should prioritize addressing these broken-down docks. So surveys like this are really informative, so we can figure out what it is that the public thinks is important and how we as Water Resources can better serve our community. Another method that we use for stakeholder outreach is educational materials, such as ArcGIS Story Maps, handouts, and you can see sort of in the middle-left of the screen there, we have a lakebed permitting handout that I created as part of these outreach efforts. And then our final component to stakeholder engagement, which Marina touched on briefly in her introduction, is volunteer engagement. As Civic Spark Fellows, we are required to do volunteer engagement projects for AmeriCorps. So Liam's was a Highland Springs Fire Fuel Reduction Service Day, and mine was the Clear Lake Shoreline Cleanup Day, which was hosted just last month in June. And as far as the cleanup goes, that was hosted, as I mentioned, with myself and two other Civic Spark Fellows who are in Lake County, not with Water Resources, but as Marina mentioned, we do, we're lucky to have a variety of Civic Spark Fellows in the county. And through that event, we hosted cleanup sites at Nice, Lucerne, and Lakeport and Clear Lake, and we are happy to report that we collected over 1,300 pounds of trash in that one day. And it was a very hot morning, so we're really happy that the community could come out and help us clean up our shoreline. Next slide, please. Thank you. So now I'll move into the third and final component of our project, and that is policy analysis. And specifically for us, our policy analysis component focused on chapter 23, the Clear Lake Shoreline Ordinance, which is part of the Lake County Code of Ordinances. So the main component of this, I guess the main element of this part of the project is that we want to create recommended updates to chapter 23. Chapter 23 has been around for a while, and our department has noticed that there are gaps in the ordinance that make it more difficult for us to serve the public and to manage the lakebed. So one of my major tasks was to meet with various people in the department, to figure out where the gaps are, and to recommend amendments to chapter 23. So as I mentioned, I sort of serve in this capacity to meet the needs that the department can't currently fill. This is really time-consuming to look through the ordinance and to go through policy. It can take a while, and our staff are very busy doing X, Y, and Z, so that's where I came in, and I was able to fill this gap, I guess. And I'm very interested in policy, so for me, this was a fun project to endeavor. So my role really was to create a foundation for amending the ordinance moving forward. I myself am not going to be the one presenting the ordinance amendments, but I was able to come up with a pretty comprehensive guide for recommendations that the department can take moving forward. Next slide, please. So a few topics that we looked at with chapter 23, this is not at all an extensive list, it is much longer than this, but some of them include houseboats, various definitions within the ordinance, non-conforming structures such as that falling apart dock that you see there at the bottom, that photo there, floating structures such as the floating dock in the upper left-hand corner, and mooring buoys, such as the top-right photo, and more, as I said. And this is something that Water Resources will be bringing to the board in the next few months, so I will not get too into the weeds here, but I just wanted to sort of capture some of the topics that we've looked at. And something else that is important to note is, even though the amendments are not yet complete, all of the recommendations that I've come up with, with our team, they're really focused on improving Water Resources' ability to serve the public and to manage the shoreline in a way that promotes the public's interest in commerce, fishery, navigation, recreation, all those great things that we love about Clear Lake. Next slide, please. So the process for amending the ordinance, it's been a long process. It's something that I started with as soon as we started our service year, almost 11 months ago now, which is crazy to think. The first step in this process was to interview our staff and to reach out to the public with that survey that I mentioned during the stakeholder engagement component, and this was intended to identify perceived gaps in chapter 23. What are we doing well? What can be done better? And how can we use the ordinance to be able to better serve the public, as I mentioned? The second step, and one that was very time-consuming, was to draft the recommended amendments, and this was a process of revisions. It wasn't just all in one go, it's taken many different iterations, and that kind of blends into step three was workshopping these recommended amendments and revising them with our lakebed management team here in Water Resources. So step four, and what I'm currently working on as we're wrapping up our service year, is to create a plan for next steps that the department can take to amend the ordinance. And that's where, once our fellowship ends, we move into step five, where our lakebed management team will prioritize the amendments that they like and they want to move forward with, and then we'll end up moving forward by working with county council, coming to the board eventually, and continually revising the amendments until we get something that meets our, meets our needs and helps us to serve the public, and we hope to also educate stakeholders about these changes, so that the public is aware of the changes that we make and how that affects them as stakeholders of Clear Lake. Next slide, please. And finally, as I mentioned, we are wrapping up our service year here in the next three weeks or so. But the fun doesn't stop there. We are going to be transitioning this project, because we will be having another Civic Spark Fellow in the fall. That fellow's project is the Clear Lake Watershed Stewards Program, and it will, this program will essentially build on the work that Liam and I have done so far, while also doing some really fun things. So a quick snapshot of what our next fellow will be doing, they'll be continuing Score the Shore. As Liam said, we got started with the actual fieldwork and data collection component a bit late, as we were figuring out how we could adapt the methodology to Clear Lake. That took a lot of time. But now that we have the methodology figured out and we have the staff and the resources to do this, the new fellow will be able to continue and hopefully finish Score the Shore. They also will continue with our data management and stakeholder outreach and public engagement components, and hopefully develop a Clear Lake Watershed Stewards Program to help us work with property owners to manage the lake and keep it healthy. A vibrant shoreline is the goal. And as I mentioned, or at least alluded to in the last slide, Lake County Water Resources will be moving forward with those ordinance amendments. The fellow will not be involved with that next year. This will move to our county staff, and you'll be seeing more information about that in the coming months. So with that, next slide, please. And that concludes our presentation. We thank you so much for your time today, and our contact information there is at the bottom of the slide. Feel free to reach out to us, and I'd like to open it up for a Q and A.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and just to speak about Civic Sparks and AmeriCorps, I get this feeling that somebody in our staff has had the experience of being on AmeriCorps, which is probably why we have a great link to getting such a large number of Civic Sparks Fellows here in Lake County. I know that I have worked and seen the work of Liam with the mapping project that he's done for the Middle Creek Restoration Project, and really appreciate the fact that you've helped advance so many policies and so many things that we need to change and don't have the capacity necessarily to provide. So thank you so much for your work and for your time here with us in Lake County. Are there any questions? Supervisor Piska?
So I was going to say the same thing. Liam and Nicole, we appreciate that you spent your service year here in Lake County, and we do have a strong Civic Spark, we have strong representation here, and we have benefited greatly from all of your service. So thank you for choosing Lake County, and I really wish you well, and your careers ahead of you are going to be very bright, and we really appreciate the extra capacity that you do bring, and I'm looking forward to these recommendations that are going to be brought to our board for ordinance changes.
Thank you, Supervisor Piska.
Anyone else have a comment or a question? So I did have a question. I, it just, it kind of hurts to see the low number for the Clear Lake area, and I'm just curious, does, if there was more tulies in the area, if the score would have changed drastically, or if it's not as simple as that? Because I know we have pretty large beach areas that are very wide open, that don't offer the, the natural habitat that used to be there, most likely used to be there. I'm wondering if that would make a huge difference to maybe look at, and maybe one of the recommendations will be to push for more restoration of the tulies.
Yeah, that would be a factor that would definitely increase the scores, for sure. There are numerous other ones that play into that. I can't speak completely to the complete scenario there, but I do think kind of just shifting towards natural shorelines with tulies and such, and moving away from these hardscape shorelines that are very evident there in terms of seawalls and riprap, and creating also, as well as with tulies in areas, you see high tulies, you also see large vegetative buffers in terms of the riparian landscape, where that is also a strong indicator towards healthier shorelines. So I think tulies can be a big factor in improving that, but then I think also with tulies come other improvements as well.
Right. And I think it's difficult in the area with such a high-density development that's already occurred. That's not something that you can make change for that. So I think that there's always going to be some lower scores in that region because of that. So I do appreciate the, the project, and definitely looking forward to the recommendations, including the ordinance changes. Let's go ahead and open this up to the public if there's no further comment from the board. Anyone from the public have a comment on this agenda item? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back. And I believe I heard that it would be in a few months or something along those lines, that we would see some of these potential changes to the ordinance. Do you have a better timeline than just a few months for us?
Yes, I wish I could get specific. Actually, I wish I could have brought those changes to you today, those recommendations today. I do not currently have a timeline to give you at this moment. That is something that, as Liam and I prepare to transition out of Civic Spark, we have a variety of transition materials that we fill out, and that includes recommendations to the department for how they can continue the efforts that we've started. So that is definitely something I can look into and I can get to you later, is a little bit more of a clearer timeline. But as we know, timelines are, you know, there's a lot of curveballs, and there's a lot of factors that go into this, so the few months is the best I can do right now. Thank you.
And I hope that you get an invitation when we do bring this to the board. I do also have a curiosity. Is this something that might be able to be presented to the cities to better understand in their future development in ensuring that they're protecting the coastal areas of our lake and things like that?
Sure, yeah, and that could be something that is part of what the next fellow does. We're trying to find ways to make sure that we're engaging every stakeholder who needs to be engaged, whether that be lakefront property owners, the cities themselves. So that is also something that we can put in the transition materials to recommend that the next fellow and our staff moving forward, that they focus on.
Okay. Thank you very much, and again, thank you so much for your work and your presentation. And Director DeLeon?
Yes, Chair Sabatia. If I could just have one moment, I know you're running late, so I'll be brief. I just wanted to acknowledge Liam and Nicole. I don't know if they'll remember this, but I believe it was the first day they, they came to the department. We had a meeting, first or second day, we had a meeting, and I challenged them that whatever task that they took on this year, whatever project that, that they did, that the product was useful, that there was a, at the end, that, that it was going to be something that, that we could use, that it could be something that could be expanded upon. And as I sit here today and I, and I watch this amazing report and the summary of the amazing work that they've done, they have exceeded my expectations significantly, and I just, I can't thank both of them enough. As you can see, there are a couple of amazing folks, and, and they just brought tremendous energy to the department, and, and not that we had enough energy already, but it was, it's, it's kind of challenging to keep up with them up here, but they, they did spectacular work this year, and we're certainly going to miss them. They were, not only did great work, but they were great additions to the team and brought a lot of enjoyment to the department. So I'd just like to acknowledge them publicly and, and thank them very much for everything they did.
Thank you for those last words.
Thank you, Director DeLeon.
I'm not sure what that was. Okay, we're going to move on then. All right, thank you so much, and we'll go ahead and close out that item. We are going to go straight to item 5.3, one of the consent agenda items that was pulled, approve amendment number two to 2019 agreement with Tetra Tech Inc. for sulfur, Pawnee, and Mendocino Complex wildfire structural burn debris removal insurance cost recovery and invoicing in Lake County, California with compensation not to exceed $492,425 for an extended term ending November 25th, 2021, to add Clayton and LNU Lightning Complex collections and authorize the chair to sign. And CAO Hutchinson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Matthew Rosstine's project. He'll present it to you. We asked for it to be pulled off consent very briefly because it needed a minor correction.
Good afternoon, board, and thank you for this opportunity to address here. So yes, the primary reason it was pulled from the consent agenda is that the term of the agreement is actually being extended through November 2022, not November 2021. And I'm available to provide additional background if needed. This amendment does, as Carol mentioned, it does loop in those other fires that were not previously contracted, and the per-unit price is actually lower than the original agreement. The amendment was also put together in consultation with county disaster finance and purchasing staff, as well as representatives from Cal OES and FEMA. So we do feel very confident in what's presented today, so I'm here to provide background if needed.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions from the board on this item? All right, and thank you again for the clarification that it's all the way to November 25th, 2022. Let's open it up for the public. Anyone in the Zoom room have a comment or a question? And let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve amendment number two to 2019 agreement with Tetra Tech Inc. for the sulfur, Pawnee, and Mendocino Complex wildfire structural burn debris removal insurance cost recovery and invoicing in Lake County. California folding in Clayton, oh, that's weird. California folding in, in Clayton and LNU Lightning Complex collections with compensation not to exceed $492,425 for an extended term ending November 25th, 2022, and to add an LNU Lightning Complex collections and authorize the chair to sign. I think I got that right.
Second.
Confusing answer.
And the amendment was within the motion, so we should be good. So we have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Piska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead, and I think we have some more staff waiting for us, and let's get to that.[1795.15] Okay, let's go ahead and straight to 7.2. Consideration of Lease Agreement Between the County of Lake and John Allen Die Trust of 1993 for the premises located at 325 North Forbes Street, Lakeport, for use as Office of the Registrar of Voters/Elections for a 10-year term from August 1, 2021 to July 31, 2031. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're really excited to present this item to you today. Matthew Rothstein has taken the lead on this and has worked very closely with our Registrar of Voters, Maria Valades, who I believe is in the Zoom with us.
Correct.
She was earlier. So Matthew will present the lease, and then Maria will touch on a little bit about why this is such a great opposition for her department.
Thank you once again. So as your board is aware, there have been longstanding needs of greater space for both our Auditor, Controller, County Clerk, and Registrar of Voters offices. And we're very excited that the 10-year lease that we're presenting to your board today can solve both of those needs. You will recall the Space Committee initially authorized search for a suitable space for the Registrar of Voters office in mid-2019. And this is actually the first space that we've identified that is sufficiently close to the courthouse and appropriately sized to meet the needs of the Elections Office. So this is truly exciting. There are some initial improvements that are needed before the Elections Office can occupy this space, and those are listed in Appendix A of the agreement, which is on PDF, page 9. The agreed-upon initial lease rate is $1.11 per square foot, and that's going to stay the same for the first five years of the agreement, and then it will increase at 90% of the Consumer Price Index, up to a maximum of 2% per year. And we also envision that the agreement can be, well, the agreement states it can be extended in up to 10-year increments, and the current property owner is interested in this being a very long-term arrangement, which is a great thing for both the county and the Die family. So the Registrar of Voters office is expected to be able to open operations at this new location as soon as early 2022. I did want to just draw your attention to a few minor corrections that we made following the posting of your board's agenda. One is just the page numbering was corrected. There are nine pages to the agreement. For whatever reason, it was off in the version that was posted. Today's date has also been added to the first page, and the bottom of page seven was updated to read in witness whereof, "County and John Allen Die Trust of 1993 executed this lease agreement on the day and year first written above," which is today's date. The county signature block was also updated, as this agreement will be signed by Chairman Sabatier on behalf of the county. And also, the proposed action on the memo should have included the language and authorized the chair to sign. So I wanted to just bring that to your attention when you offer the motion. So that's all I have, but I would like to, if your board is open, we'd love to give Maria Valades an opportunity to talk about why this space is so perfect for her office.
Absolutely. We'd love to hear from her. Director Valades.
Good afternoon. Maria Valades, Registrar of Voters. So first off, I'd like to thank Carol, Matt, and, you know, everybody in admin that's been helping Lars, Bob Allen, for working collaboratively with me on, you know, giving me plans and allowing me to see the building and having the ideas for what we'd like the remodeling to look like. So thank you, everybody, for helping with it. As, I don't know if you all know, but our current square footage is 847 square feet. Our staff has increased from two permanent employees when we moved down here in 1997 to currently we have, one, two, three, four, five permanent staff members, several extra help employees. So 847 square feet is very, very small, considering, you know, the increase in our continuing needs for security, accessibility, and privacy. So moving into this building, it's going to give us, you know, 2,000 roughly square-footed feet. So, you know, it's going to allow us to be able to have our, continue having our Elections Computer Room, having a ballot processing room, room that's only for ballot processing, where we don't have workers working in there, and, I mean, you know, extra help or permanent employees working in there on daily, daily activity. We have a foyer where we would have public service windows, waiting area, and room for voting booths where, you know, previously before they redid the hallway here on the second floor, we had to have the booths, we had limited booths up here for voting. Were in November this last year because COVID, we had to use the four supervisors' chambers to be able to accommodate more voters. So, you know, that would help out, too. And then, you know, being able to have an office for myself and my deputies to be able to have private conversations with our staff and internal key staff and vendors, you know, where right now it's like we have to kick everybody out of the back room to be able to have that, you know? And then plenty of room for our extra help workers to be able to work. And where we're setting up our precinct kits, normally we have to wait until the four chambers are available to us to be able to assemble a lot of our supplies that have to be deployed to the polling places. So, you know, just having the room to be able to conduct an election, you know, without having that additional stress of, okay, now we have to work nights to be able to get all the work done, or come on on weekends to be able to do this. So, really, that's all I have. But I'm sure the Auditor's Office would be, you know, able to move over this way and have additional room for themselves, too. I mean, like I said, it's been a long time coming for us, and, you know, I really would appreciate that this be approved so that we can move forward and get over there before the 2020 election, 2022 election.
Awesome, thank you. And I'm sure the Auditor Controller is already up there with the tape measure, figuring out how things are going to look in the near future. So I think it's exciting for everybody. Any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, this is exciting. I know that last year's election, I came up to talk with the Registrar of Voters, Maria Valades, and asked, you know, if there's anything we can do to help. She says, even if there was, where am I going to have the help, you know, placed? There's not enough room. We have a mandate by the state to do X, Y, and Z. And I'm just glad to see that within this next year, we were able to at least provide a solution for that. So again, thank you.
All right. Any other comment? Supervisor Scott?
I fully support this lease agreement, and I'm grateful that we were able to find a building so close to the courthouse here. I did have a constituent call me with concerns of safety of your staff and security, because you no longer will have the security of the front entering the courthouse. Have you put any thought into that?
So we've talked about having, well, you know, because the building has to be remodeled, you know, we haven't really talked about, like, putting up, like, windows like we have here right now, looking into maybe bulletproof windows? I don't know, you know, but it depends on the budget that I have to be able to accommodate that remodel. We talked about, I think Matthew and Carol have mentioned, having security during election time, hiring security, you know, during the election period. But cameras, I mean, you know, I don't know. You know, we're close enough into town and stuff, and just having a panic button, you know, installed in our building. But, I mean, anything different than what we would have here already? I mean, you know, it's...
Well, definitely come back to this board, because, you know, we want safety for your staff, so whatever we can do to make sure that happens, I believe that you would have support from us to do that.
Thank you. I don't know when they're going to come back with the presentation on what the cost it would be to, you know, for the current remodel request that I have, but maybe they can include that into the budget.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, I'm glad that we're speaking about this today. I know it's been, it's been in the works for a while, as you said. Matthew started talking about it in early 20, it might have been in the end of 2018, 2019, but we're glad to be here today. I know that, you know, absolutely, it didn't own 74 square feet or whatever it is, that's just way too small. We've all been up in that office. The great work that is done by Registrar of Voters every year, this space will definitely help out. So I'm in complete support, and we will try and do everything we can to develop in the most safest manner. And it is right across the street. It's directly out the window out here to your right, just right across, and it looks like a great building facility for our Registrar of Voters. So in complete support, and I want to thank Carol, all of the Space Committee, and obviously Maria in working in the path to get this completed. So, yeah, good day today.
Thank you very much. I have a quick question. I know you have storage also here in the courthouse. Will there be enough room for you to be able to move over all your storage stuff, or will you continue using it, just to see if that's going to free up some other room for other departments to be able to utilize? I know that we're all hard up on room.
So currently, I'm going to say, I'm going to keep my storage units for now until we can move over there and then see how we can accommodate some of that. I mean, I, you know, there's certain storages I have to have. I still have to have the voting unit.
Right.
Equipment. That's a big storage unit. I can't give up. I have a couple underneath here, under the stairwell, or, you know, under the third floor. But within time, you know, once we, I can't tell you right now if I'd be able to give something up until we move in there and see what, you know, how we can make that happen. We just don't have the room in here, so we kind of stack everything on top of everything. So once we, you know, can lay out everything, then we would be able to see about that.
Okay. And then, of course, any and all of the upgrades that will happen to that due to the costs will come before us, so it'll be, looking forward to what those upgrades look like. I think that the comfort of your staff will absolutely increase. I know you've done a great job already with the changes that you were able to make in the tight quarters that you have currently, but this is going to be a fantastic change. So looking forward to approving this. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone from the public have any comments or question about this item? And seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for action.
There were some, were there some revisions that Matthew said?
Yeah, so I know that Matthew did mention the revisions, the page numbers, some of the upgrades, I think, was, there was three things, off the top of my head. I'm...
Your board can simply approve the agreement with the modifications as presented by staff this date?
Thank you. So I will go ahead and move to approve the lease agreement between the County of Lake and John Allen Die Trust of 1993 for the premises located at 325 North Forbes Street, with the revisions presented by staff for the use of office for the Registrar of Voters and Elections for a 10-year term in August 1, 2021 to July 31, 2031. Would that cover?
And authorize the chair to sign, is the last part of the action.
And authorize the chair to sign.
All right, we have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second by Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. That's awesome.
Thank you very much. We're going to go celebrate now.
All right, let's go ahead and keep moving down the agenda. We are now on 7.3, I believe. Consideration to, A, consideration to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services; and B, consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and Idea Consulting for development and implementation of an organized delivery system for substance use disorder services for fiscal year 2021, 2022, for a contract maximum of $50,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Just to let the board know, 7.3 through 7.8 were originally on the consent agenda, when submitted to the board for placing on the agenda. I moved these before the agenda was posted, as I knew I was going to be pulling these items. And so I just wanted to at least make that statement and make the statement that my only argument for any of these is the same argument I've been making in the last few meetings, which is the waiving portion which I, of the bidding process, which I disagree with. And so I will let Director Metcalf introduce these items, but I am just looking to make one single argument, and the rest is it. And that's it. I'm done with my argument. Director Metcalf?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the Director of Behavioral Services. Yeah, I would love to lump all of these agenda items together, but I'm afraid, I know it's late in the day, but I would like to sort of run through each one of these agenda items just...
And we have to, and we have to anyways.
Right. And so we'll be as brief and quick as possible. And thankfully, since it's so late in the day, I actually had a lot of time to sort of script it out, so I promise it will be quick. But I have invited a couple of my staff members to help me sort of tag-team this. And so for Agenda Item 7.3, I'm going to turn this over to our Substance Abuse Programs' Manager, April Gambra, who will probably do a much better job explaining what this is than I am. So April, if you want to just jump in, I'll turn it over to you. And then I'll pick up the next one.
Thank you, Todd. Hello, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is April Gambra. As Todd had mentioned, I'm the Substance Abuse Program Manager for Lake County Behavioral Health Drug and Alcohol Programs. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to be able to answer any questions that you may have in regards to Item 7.3. Agenda Item 7.3 is a contract with Idea Consulting to provide support in developing an implementation plan, policies, letter of intent, and training to prepare our department with entering the organized delivery system. The organized delivery system is an expansion of drug and alcohol resources that will become available to remaining California counties, I believe, July 2022. Department of Healthcare Services has requested that counties begin to submit the required documents by the end of 2021, so December 2021. Idea Consulting has the experience in assisting multiple counties with preparing for the expansion of drug medical services, including stakeholder engagement process necessary to submit the letter of intent in approximately four months. They have experience in preparing information to present to the board on the organized delivery system itself, and so we're really going to call upon their expertise in collecting information, disseminating this information, and preparing a presentation for the board, as well as going out to our stakeholders. What makes Idea unique is that through our initial interviewing of other counties who are currently in the organized delivery system, Idea Consulting was mentioned several times in their ability to help us navigate through their already accumulation of policies, procedures, trainings, both models of the organized delivery system and the regional and direct contract with Department of Healthcare Services. There were no other contractors or consulting agencies that were mentioned through our interviewing of other counties. And there were no other consulting agencies that were available to be able to meet the timeline. So it is for those reasons that I'm requesting that the formal bidding process be waived per Lake County Code, Section 38.2, and approval of this contract be granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board? And I appreciate the explanation for the waiving of the bidding. Just to explain to the public, as well as staff, we are reaching close to, if we approve all of these here today, reaching close to $4 million worth of contracts for behavioral health that have not gone through any formal bidding process. And while it seems to have been stated that there are other possibilities out there, but could not meet the timelines that we needed, I don't believe that that is an exception for waiving the formal bidding process based on my knowledge of the purchasing ordinance. And without having any reports to show the efficiencies and outcomes of these contracts, I just struggle to continue with the waiving of the bidding process. I am working with the administration, and we will be coming back with a revised purchasing ordinance. I believe that is supposed to come either next week or in the following week after that, but I know that it's been discussed and wanted to let you know that we are still working on that, and we plan to bring that back to the board for discussion. But that is my only reason, as far as the contract, I want to approve the contract, just not the waiving of the bidding. But that is my only reason, uh, as far as the contract, I want, I want to approve the contract, just not the waiving of the bidding. If there's no further comments from the board, uh, let's open it up for the public, both in the Zoom room and in the chamber. Well, sorry, nothing, nobody in the chamber left. And so let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Mr. Chair, I move, um, to approve the agreement between County of Lake and IDEA Consulting for development and implementation of an organized delivery system for substance use disorder services for fiscal year 2021, 2022 for a contract maximum of $50,000 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 7.4, consideration to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and North Valley Behavioral Health LLC for fiscal year 2021, 22 for a contract maximum of $400,000 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Director Metcalf?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, again, Todd Metcalf, Aerial Services. So this is a contract, uh, with North Valley Behavioral Health to provide inpatient psychiatric emergency services to our clients. I, I want to point out that this is the only, the only facility available in Northern California that will accept mental health clients who are incompetent to stand trial. So we currently have one client, uh, placed in this facility. And as I've said before, to move a client out of this type of situation would be extremely detrimental to, to the treatment, um, and services that the client is receiving. So that said, um, I'm requesting that the formal bidding process be waived, uh, per Lake County Code 38.2. And also asking for approval of this contract simply because there are no other, um, facilities in, in the area that can provide this service. And, and as you've heard me also say before, these contracts are dealing with people, um, not widgets. And, and, and so that's what makes these a little special and that's why I keep going back to, um, that County Code 38.2. Um, and, and, and I'll stop there. But I am, I am requesting approval, uh, based upon what I just said.
Thank you very much, Director, Director Metcalf. Any questions or comments from the board? All right, let's open it up from the public. Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Section, Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and North Valley Behavioral Health LLC for fiscal year 2021, 2022 for contract maximum of $400,000 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we're going to go to item 7.5. I believe that Director Metcalf wanted to pull this item. Just want to check in and make sure that that is the correct item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to pull it, but I have, um, our administrative deputy director, Elise Jones, here to, uh, just explain a little bit as to the reason why we are pulling this item, if, if the board will give us, um, that time to explain.
Good evening, your board chair. As stated, Elise Jones, Deputy Director, Behavioral Health Services. This item actually originally was placed on the calendar, um, back in 2020. And it has to do with the installation of a commercial fire alarm system, which is required for Medica Health certification for any behavioral health or healthcare facility. There was admittedly some confusion around regarding the process of procurement for this that has kind of had a ripple effect and hence it's being removed today. Supervisor, or excuse me, Chair Sabatier, you had noted some inconsistencies, um, with the memo, the contract, with the invoices that we are needing to reconcile. So I apologize for that, um, confusion and that is why we were pulling the item.
Okay, and the item will, uh, reappear in, um, any date certain or just in a future agenda, uh, when it comes up?
Actually, it's not clear that it needs to reappear because the, the amount is, um, less than $25,000, it appears.
Okay, perfect. Uh, any comments or questions about pulling the item from the board? Let's open it up to the public. Again, we're not discussing the, uh, contract or agreement itself, just the pulling of the item. Any comments from the public? And seeing none, I think that does it for item 7.5. Let's move on to item 7.6. Consideration to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain Valley Family and Child Services for Special Mental Health Services for fiscal year 21, 22 in the amount of $44,700 and to authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Director Metcalf?
Yes, it's my turn again. Um, so, so this is a contract with Mountain Valley Family and Child Services to provide specialty mental health services, uh, to our clients. Mountain Valley has facilities located in Nevada City and Sacramento. We, uh, currently have one client, uh, placed at one of these facilities. And again, I know I sound like a record, but, you know, to, to, to move, um, a client from a facility like this would, would be extremely, um, detrimental to, to their recovery plan. So I'm, again, requesting that the formal bidding process be waived per Lake County Code, Section 38.2. And again, I'm also asking approval for this contract because there are simply no, uh, facilities locally that provide these types of services. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Trying to keep it short.
I think we're, we're all trying our best and I, I, my heart hurt when I heard, uh, "good evening." It, it obviously means it's late. Uh, any comments or questions from the board?
No.
All right, opening up to the public, any comments or questions from the public? And bringing it back for action. I think Supervisor Scott is done.
Mr. Chair, I waive the formal bidding process to, pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique natures and the goods of services.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
I was just sharing. Aye.
Supervisor?
Yes.
I didn't hear Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
Part B?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agree, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and the Mountain Valley Family and Child Services for Specialty Mental Health Services for fiscal year 2021, 22 in the amount of $44,700 and to authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And, uh, for efficiency purposes, if it's possible to get a full motion of A and B put together just for efficiency purposes, um, that I think would still, uh, provide the same outcomes. Item 7.7, A, consideration to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and Willow Glen Care Center for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services for fiscal year 2021, 22 for a contract maximum of $100,000 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Hold on, Director Metcalf, I have a feeling that, uh, Ms. Grant, our county council, wants to say something.
All I wanted to say is when you actually go to make your motion, you, you can, uh, just simply move to waive the, the formal bidding process for item 7.7 and approve the agreement as presented.
Okay.
Thank you.
But wait, I had something to say about it.
All right, Director Metcalf?
No, no, it, it's the same thing. We've got people there. We actually have four people placed at various, uh, Willow Glen facilities. They, they have facilities both in Willitsen and UBS City, which, which is nice because it's close by and it affords our staff to be able to go, you know, check in on our clients. And, and again, you know, for us to, to not renew this contract and have to move our clients, uh, would be detrimental to their recovery plan. And it's, it's the same, it's the same old story. But, um, it, 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 again, I mean, these, these contracts are complicated because we're talking about people. And, and I respect the going out to bid thing. I mean, I, I'm totally into that. And, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's just, I, I just feel that these, these are specialty services contracts. And I, I believe that we can, you know, waive the bidding process. So as I said before, perhaps going into next fiscal year, we'll, we'll throw it out there and see what we can get. But, um, these are people and, and it's, um, it's a little different than, you know, buying a new roof or, and we've been through that before too. So anyway, I, I'm requesting the, the, the board to approve this contract. Again, just because there are no facilities in our county that provide these services. And again, um, I believe that this is a specialty services contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, let's open it up to the public. And let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we waive the formal bidding process for 7.7 and approve the attached agreement. As presented.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
And 7.8, A, consideration to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the new unique nature of goods or services. And B, consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and Hilltop Recovery Services for Substance Use Disorder Residential Services for fiscal year 2021, 22 for a contract maximum of $199,100 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. And Director Metcalf, sorry.
It's not me this time. Um, I'm going to turn this back over to April Gambra, our Substance Abuse Programs Manager, who is our, our resident, um, Substance Use Disorder Services expert. And again, she will be able to explain this a lot better than, than I would. So April, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, thank you, board members, for this opportunity to answer any questions that you may have about the agenda item 7.8. So this is a contract with Hilltop Recovery Services for intensive outpatient, um, outpatient drug free and residential services specifically for men in the residential treatment portion. There are no other drug Medica Health certified or licensed providers within the county who offer, uh, men's residential services. It is essential for individuals to be able to provide or be able, I'm sorry, for individuals to be able to access these resources to promote recovery from drug and alcohol disorders. We currently have individuals who are placed there. Uh, we have three clients who are currently receiving services in the residential portion of this contract. Some of which were placed, uh, June of 2021 and whose treatment care lasted well into our fiscal year, uh, 20, our new, uh, sorry, fiscal year 21, 22. We have individuals who are currently waiting to enter into treatment, um, who desperately need for this contract to be approved. The Hilltop contract also meets a required mandate, uh, set by the Department of Healthcare Services for intensive outpatient treatment. They are the, uh, only intensive outpatient program who is currently operating, um, and offering services, uh, for Medica Health and fisheries and, uh, for family residents. So not having this contract in place places us at risk of being out of compliance with requirements for a state contract. Hilltop also provides a unique service to individuals who are full scope, uh, Medica Health beneficiaries between the ages of 18 and 21. Not having this residential option for, uh, this age, um, specialized age range could prove to have a negative impact on T H Medica Health beneficiaries attempting to access residential services under the Medica Health program. It is for these reasons that I'm requesting that the formal bidding process be waived per Lake County Code, Section 38.2, and approval of this contract be granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions from the board? And seeing none, open it up to the public. And seeing none, coming back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process for item 7.8 and approve the attached agreement.
Second.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor, sorry Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
I think we're getting a little delirious up here. Uh, thank you very much, Director Metcalf and to your team. Sorry for making you wait so long to be able to present.
Thank you very much.
Uh, moving on to item 7.9.
No, I'm ready for some more.
We got a motion before the introduction. Consideration of the following, Advisory Board Appointments, Mental Health Advisory Board. And we have, uh, two applications on there. And are there any questions or comments from the board on the applications? I did see that for Camille Cummins, that there was both the, uh, diversity and the, uh, mental health. I just wanted to make sure we're only, uh, there's only positions available for mental health, correct? And I'm looking at the, uh, Diversity Board Supervisors.
Yeah, I think that this is only.
This is just for mental health.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because on the application it had both.
I know she attends and I think she's a part of that one as well. That's what she was listing possibly.
Perfect. And I know that, uh, Camille Cummins is in District 2, uh, met her many a times in the past. A wonderful person to add to the Mental Health Advisory Board. So if somebody can go ahead and make that motion for me, that would be great.
She put District 1 on her application.
I thought she was in District 2. She's in Highlands Harbor. Oh, she has District 1, that's, I forget that. That's south.
I think you do forget that sometimes.
I do. I do, I do.
It only happened to me, I don't think either.
I have to add that both these applicants have, um, already been to, um, board meetings. So, um, and they have been interviewed and these are recommendations.
Okay. Have we gone to the public?
Sorry, open it up for the public comment?
I, I don't know if I count as public, but I'm also familiar with these two applicants and, and just want to kind of, uh, throw in that, that our mental health board now is, has become a very robust, dynamic, uh, group. Um, it's taken me years to pull it all together, but, um, these two applicants will be a great addition, um, to what, what they are already doing, um, for our department. So, um, I, I, I'm in full support of, of these two applicants.
I believe you're a little bit more official than public, uh, but, but thank you for your comment. Again, open it up for the public. I saw Hannah disappear, just. Again, open it up for the public, I saw a hand disappear, just double checking, yeah, Julie Kolfax.
Hello, I actually was just responding to the comments about Camille being on another, this is Julie Kolfax, I'm the Chair of your Mental Health Advisory Board. Yeah, I was just responding that yes, we are aware that Camille is on another board as well and we are just so happy to have her, we will make sure we work with her to ensure that there are no conflicts of interest involved in that work. And we are very ecstatic to have both of these members and I just received yesterday our third and last application from somebody else who's been attending our meetings recently. So I thank you very much for getting this on the agenda and taking care of these appointments.
Thank you very much. And without any further public comments, let's bring, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Camille Cummins and Michelle Young to be appointed to the Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Pyska, roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I do know that you have other consent agenda items, I believe, still to go.
Yes, I was gonna, I was just going back to those.
And I did want to ask your board if you would consider please to reopen for reconsideration agenda item 6.4, sub C and D.
Oh, okay, and I believe we still have staff here, so let's definitely get to that. Do I need a motion to reopen 6.4?
Yes.
So moved.
C and D, just C and D.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second Supervisor Pyska, Johanna, roll call please to reopen that item.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye. And so we have 6.4 reopened, just gonna read it real fast, public hearing, sitting concurrently as clear Lake Key, CSA number 1, number 2, number 6, number 13, 2021, Board of Supervisors, Kelseyville County Water Works, District 3, and Lake County Sanitation District, Board of Directors, consideration of A, resolution confirming collections of annual lighting fees, actually, all we're doing is C and D, which is resolution confirming collections of delinquent water and sewer fees. Was it C and D or just C?
C and D, there's sewer in D as well.
Okay, and D, resolution of delinquent sewer fees for Lake County Sanitation District. Both of those needed a four-fifths vote in order to be approved, with the votes that were done earlier, those two C and D did not go through, wanted to make sure that the board was aware of, of the results of that vote, and if no further changes, then we can do a re-vote on these or we can just make sure that the staff and the public is aware that those did not go through.
Yes, sir, I think that you may, you may want a re-vote as to one of them, the Kelseyville Water Works District. If it turns out that your board does not want to take up the other matter, then I'd recommend that you bring that back within a week or two for further consideration with further information from staff because of the timing of the property tax.
With the deadline of August 6.
Yes, so that you don't miss that because that would increase it by potentially up to 18 months.
And so we're looking, water, Kelseyville Water District was C, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do we need to rescind the vote or, or did we do that by reopening since we did?
I think you can, I think you can do a motion to rescind and, and then offer it again, offer the resolution a second time, so first a motion to rescind the, the prior adoption of the, of the resolution and a new motion to, to offer the resolution a second time.
Okay.
I just want to get around, I'm ready to offer the motion, but it's for the resolution confirming collections of water and sewer fees or D, resolution of delinquent sewer fees for Lake County Sanitation District.
And I think we're gonna do each C and D separately.
Yes.
So we're gonna rescind C.
Sure, alright, gonna make a move to rescind resolution.
Second.
For the Kelseyville Water District.
We have, we have a resolution, or the motion to rescind has been offered by Supervisor Simon and seconded by Supervisor Pyska, Johanna, roll call.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And if your board chooses, you may offer that same resolution again.
Mr. Chair, I would like to offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Supervisor Simon, Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
And then we're looking to rescind D, the resolution for delinquent sewer fees in Lake County Sanitation District.
And, and I'm sorry, sorry, if you would then also just continue the public hearing as to D until next week or the week after so that it can be taken up again with any further information, your board may determine you want to approve it, you may determine not to.
And.
Could we do that today for change or?
Well, if you had the votes to change it, you could do the same thing you just did, but I don't believe you do.
Okay. Yeah, I won't change my vote on that one.
Okay.
So, so as to, as to D, if your board would, would just consider rescinding your action on that resolution and put that matter over until either next week or the week after, you might want to ask Mr. Harder in terms of timeframe, what, what he's thinking because he'd be providing your board with further information.
Director Harder, when do you think you might be able to provide further information on dealing with the sanitation district?
I can accommodate either and the sooner would be preferred, so next week would be preferable.
Okay, so then a motion to rescind and then a motion to continue public hearing at a certain date?
Which would be the 20th at a time certain.
Okay, and Johanna, is 9:30 a.m. next week good or does that not work? What's a good time that we can place that on the agenda?
I think 9:30 would work if Carol's still here to confirm.
Yes, I'm still here, it is a full agenda next week, so if, if, if the 27th is possible, I, I don't, I'm looking at Director Harder, is that possible?
It's certainly possible, it just pushes the deadline closer out and I'm not certain at this point in time what the impact on the auditor or the tax collector's departments is, so my preference would be to expedite it, giving them more time because they have certain cutoffs before that August 6 date as well and stuff that they have to do.
Okay, 9:30 it is.
Okay. So looking for a motion to rescind that item and then a motion to continue the public hearing at 9:30 a.m. on July 20.
So moved.
Second.
And we can do both in one, perfect, Supervisor Scott with the motion, Supervisor Pyska with the second, Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Don't open that door, Sam.
Thank you.
Sam, you don't open that door, man.
And, sorry, got distracted there. Now we're gonna go back to our 5.2 item, adopt, adopt resolution, amending resolution number 2021-65, establishing salaries and benefits for management employees for the period November 1, 2020 to October 31, 2021, CAO Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so this resolution simply reinstates the salary for the Deputy Air Pollution Control Officer. This is a class that has been in existence for a number of years but hasn't been used in quite a while, like approximately a decade, I believe. And so when, because it had been inactive, when the management salary resolution was updated in October 2020, that salary was left off. And very recently, the Deputy, excuse me, the Air Pollution Control Officer has expressed his interest in filling the position, he's in the process of doing that, so we had to establish a salary for it. And the reason we pulled this item from consent is because there was a page of the salary grade table that was missing from the resolution, it's attached now, if you refresh your browser, you can see it. If you go to the grade table, which is the last three pages of the resolution, on the second page of the table, you'll see where I've put a little asterix where you can see the recommended salary for the Deputy Air Pollution Control Officer. This salary grade was set using our salary spread guidelines and is consistent with several other deputy director classes, so this will enable Director Gearhart to fill the position.
Thank you very much for your presentation and the explanation for why we pulled this item, any questions or comments from Board of Supervisors? Okay, pretty self-explanatory, thank you very much for the clarification, let's open it up for the public. Any comments from the public? And let's bring it back for action on item 5.2.
Offer the resolution?
Resolution has been offered by Supervisor Scott and Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Apparently Sam's been informed that there's a union meeting here in the chambers.
Okay, well, we are going to finish our meeting as I think that that is our priority right now. We're almost done, 5.8, I apologize in advance because it's just being nitpicky, but I did not expect us to go all the way till 6. A, approve amendment to policy regarding response to official citizen complaints, including retitling to policy regarding response to official constituent complaints, and B, authorize the CAO to seek the signatures of department heads to ensure compliance with the amended policy. The reason I pulled this is because I did get an email from a constituent that sometimes the complaints can come from people who are not our constituents, they may be visitors, they may be people from out of town that have to deal with the county, and so if we can utilize the same language that we find within the California constitutions that just says persons, the official persons complaint, something along those lines, because constituents does not necessarily always delineate the people that would be filing the complaint, so that is the reason that I pulled it, the rest of it, I have worked with the CAO to make adjustments, and so everything else is fine, any comments?
So Mr. Chair, here are my suggestions then, that, that the title, well, actually, I guess it's not the title, it's the first line after the title, that that first line simply read, "Policy Regarding Response to Official Complaints," and then everywhere else in the proposed draft with the track changes, everywhere else it says constituent, be replaced with the word person or persons.
I absolutely agree with those changes and looking for, oh, County Council?
If you're going to eliminate citizen from the title of the policy, it appears elsewhere, not just constituent, but citizen?
I believe that was taken care of within the document itself.
Okay.
If you look at the track change, all versions, the, the citizen, reference to citizen was replaced with constituent.
My apologies, it doesn't show on my attachment.
Yeah, I think it starts with the original, then the track changes and then the final draft at the end, and I believe citizen was removed and changed over to be the reason why, more inclusive to all people who are here, who may visit or reside here in Lake County. Looking for any comments from the board? Getting good reactions from the right. And opening it up for the public. And coming, we have a comment from phone 6205.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, I know that everybody is enormously tired, you've sat in for the last hour and a half, and I'm very concerned about rushing through this particular item because it's about the citizens' ability to, or the people of Lake County to complain. I've read the original policy and I read the proposed update and it is not clear to me that this isn't limiting or creating more bureaucracy for a person in Lake County to complain, so I know this might be very unusual, but it's so unusual that it's after 6:05 and you've all been so gracious about spending the day doing the people's business, please don't rush this item, make sure that when you decide about the people's ability to complain with the county, that it's done with great thoughtfulness, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any further comments? And I see none, and I know that this, the changes are not drastic changes, there's been quite a few complaints that we've received over the course of the year since I've been the chair and I'm sure that the previous chair also had to deal with these as well. I think the, the process of the complaints have a, a good process, I think that we get to the, an explanation and get to a resolution for those that file the complaints, I, I personally do not see a problem with the policy or the process, there needed to be some tweaks made to it and I think that the, I, I'm confident with the changes that we have before us, so there's no further public comment, let's bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say that you're correct and this policy just reflects the practice that has been ongoing and we've made improvements in the complaint process in the past year by automating the form, so people can submit it online and then we automatically receive it and this process just outlines how we track and make sure responses are given.
Thank you. And then back to the board for action with or without amendments up to whoever makes the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amendment, do I have to read the whole thing?
Approve 5.8 as presented with amendments?
As presented with amendment and authorize the CAO to seek the signatures of the department heads to ensure compliance with the amended policy.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Crandall, roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I see we still have Director Metcalf with us, I know we pulled item 5.9, which was approve agreement between County of Lake and Behavioral Health Services as lead agency at the Lake County Continuum of Care and North Coast Opportunities, NCO for fiscal year 2021-25 in an amount not to exceed $207,585 and authorize the chair to sign. I believe this one is being pulled not for discussion but being pulled for a future agenda, is that's correct?
Absolutely, there were just a couple of clerical errors in the text of this item and so, yes, we're going to fix that and we will get it on a, on a future board agenda if the board so allows.
Okay, any comments on that from the board? Seeing none, open it up for the public, any comments on this item? I see we do have a hand up from phone 6205, was that from a previous hand up or is this for the item 5.9?
Mr. Chair, the hand was up on the previous item.
Okay.
Good.
Hi, I do have a question about this item.
Go for it.
Thank you, can you give a little bit of detail of what this amount of money is for?
And so right now, because we're pulling the item, we're not going to discuss the actual agreement since it will come back with some changes, this would only be a discussion on whether to pull the item or not. Okay, let's bring it back to.
Well, as soon as I can get it on an agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. And I believe the last one that was pulled was item 5.12. And checking in with CAO Hutchinson, was this one pulled for a future agenda as well? This was the approve amendment five to the agreement between the County of Lake and Evan Blum, MDMPH, to assist the Lake County.
Yes, exactly.
Perfect.
For a future meeting.
Perfect. Okay. And so we will see that in a future agenda. And that was all of the consent agendas. And we will return back to closed session to finish item 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation Title, Interim Community Development Director, 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation. And just for the public's awareness, we did go over 8.1 in our previous closed session, and no action was taken. And with that.
And please look for a separate Zoom invite momentarily.
Thank you very much. And with that, our public session is over. Thank you for hanging out with us till the evening. We will see you next time.